Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting of March 3rd, 2015. We'll begin with a prayer from Deacon Pat Delogio. Thank you, Pat, for joining us.
I looked for a prayer that we could use to heal all pottles, but I didn't find any this morning. Say that whenever you want.
We'll work on it, though, I promise.
Lord, you're the giver of day and giver of night. You guard your resting and your rising. We praise you as we rise today and begin a new meeting, a good day today, as we do every day, looking for your guidance and for your help. When you gave us land, you gave us also the responsibility to care for it, to treat it well, and all those who care for it. We ask you to be with these people who have dedicated their lives to just that purpose. So we come this morning, Father, asking you to bless them, we pray. May the road rise up to meet you. May the sun shine, may the wind be always at your back, and the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields, and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. Amen.
Thank you very much, Deacon. We take the roll?
Mr. Gagels.
Present.
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 Mr. Gagels.
Good timing, Commissioner.
Try. The deacon has a prayer for being late.
We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Cantu, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, do we have an approval for the agenda?
May I make a motion? Will we approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
With Mr. Archuleta's corrections and changes?
Just for the Commission's sake, item 10B will be tabled by staff at this point.
So we have a motion with the agenda amended as described by our county manager. Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. It's time for our citizens' concerns. Ms. Bradley, CEO of Holy Cross Hospital. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I wanted to share-
Cindy Bradley, by the way, for the record. Commissioner Fambro told me I have to do that if you don't, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to share a decision that was made by the hospital board last week concerning the Pinellasco clinic, and I'd like to share a little information about the background of the Pinellasco clinic and the reason for the decision for closing it. Holy Cross Hospital opened the Pinellasco clinic in 1998. The hospital bought land and bought a modular building that is there and serves as the clinic. The hospital sought Rural Health Clinic designation, which is a Medicare designation for rural health clinics, and it allows for better reimbursement for Medicare patients. Throughout the last number of years, the hospital has had difficulty recruiting and retaining providers, and in order to maintain the rural health clinic status, the hospital has to provide a mid-level as well as a physician to supervise the mid-level. We have sustained significant losses over the last several years. In fiscal year 2013, we lost $182,000 on the operation of that clinic. In 2014, we lost $23,000, and year-to-date in 2015, we have sustained a loss of $82,000. When the board considered this, one of the things that they considered is that also located in Pinellasco is the El Centro Family Health federally qualified health clinic, and a federally qualified health clinic is another designation by Medicare. It's better reimbursement than rural health clinic reimbursement. So as a result of all of that, the hospital made a determination to close the clinic, and that will be effective on or around April 1st. So I would be happy to entertain questions.
Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, whose decision was it to close?
The board.
And who's on the board, please?
Thirteen of them, I think.
Thirteen board members.
Can you name some of them?
Ron Burnham, Andy Torres. I really blank when I'm put on the spot trying to name thirteen names. Dr. Moore, Dr. Ismail, Bruce Coleman.
Ms. Matherly.
Karen Matherly. I think we've named a majority of them.
And Fred Peralta?
Fred Peralta.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And whose recommendation was it to close?
Management's recommendation.
That means you?
Yes.
And you're an interim CEO. Shouldn't have this been done by the new CEO?
Well, I think we faced difficulties when Dr. Cardesis announced that he would be leaving the clinic, and so it was a critical time when we had to look at recruitment. And so the decision had to be made, otherwise we would have to recruit a full-time physician or a physician who would provide supervision for the clinic. We also had mid-levels who wanted to do other things, so the whole recruitment question came up. And to continue the clinic with what we call locum tenens physicians or temporary physicians is very expensive, and so sustaining these losses and then adding the additional cost of locum tenens physicians or providers just made it an untenable position. And so I don't think that decision could wait for the new CEO.
How many people now will be out of work as a result of this?
Three.
Three, okay. Are you going to absorb them, or they're just not going to?
They have the opportunity to look at any openings at the hospital as well as openings at the clinics and those kinds of things.
What steps has THS taken to assure there are sufficient providers and resources to handle Pinellasco clinic patients prior to making the decision to close?
Well, I think the fact that there's a federally qualified health clinic there. And so Pinellasco, the zip code population is about 1,200, and to have both a federally qualified clinic and a rural health clinic in the same community, and particularly when we look at Holy Cross's responsibility across Taos County, there are many other very small remote communities who have no clinic, no physician. And so the El Centro clinic, they're being reimbursed at a much higher rate, and I think that was part of the decision-making.
Ms. Bradley, have you met with the Department of Health Primary Care Office or the New Mexico Primary Care Association about meeting patient needs if you closed the clinic?
No, we have notified them of the closure.
And why was this never addressed in numerous meetings with the SPOT and Picari's Pinellasco Coalition, all the Health Task Force Study Committee meetings that I attended? This just came out of the blue for us. I mean, this is quite a shock that apparently if this had been going on for a while, we weren't, no one was told until after the facts. So why did you not bring this up at different meetings of SPOT or Picari's Pinellasco Coalition or even the Health Study or even the Commission? Why didn't you bring this up last week?
I think that part of the issue, again, many of those meetings were back in December and January that I attended, and Dr. Cardesis left at the end of January. So we began looking at recruiting. We began looking at the cost of these locum tenens providers and came to the conclusion that financially, we simply could not sustain the clinic.
Ms. Bradley, I believe there's more than 1,200 people in Pinellasco. I think it's closer to 3,500. How many current clients have received direct care services in the Pinellasco clinic?
We had, I think, about, we had about 4,400 patient, 4,500 patient years, I'm sorry, patient visits in the last fiscal year, and of those, about 2,100 were from the three or four zip codes in the Pinellasco area, so roughly half. And I think that's also part of the issue. Dr. Cardesis attracted patients who, because he had practiced in Taos and in the county before, he attracted patients who came there. So some of the volume that we saw in 2014 was really a result of him being there, and when he left, our volumes dropped considerably. So the volumes in the month of February, just a tremendous drop. And again, 4,500 patient visits, and about 2,100 of those are from the four zip codes that we consider the Pinellasco area.
Isn't that enough to meet your threshold of some regulations you have? I mean, 4,500 patients visited your clinic the last year? Isn't that enough of a threshold to sustain the operation?
Medicare has a minimum number, and it's 4,200 visits per physician and 2,100 visits for a nurse or a mid-level or nurse practitioner. So that's a total of 6,300 visits in order to get the maximum reimbursement for our Medicare patients, and we did not meet that.
I think, I would dispute that, but I'm going to go on. How many count of patients were in the clinic, the total number of patients?
I understand your question.
How many patients were registered with you as clients at the clinic, the total number of patients?
In 2014, we had about 1,100 patients, 1,082 patients, and of those, 590 were from Pinellasco and about, almost 500 were from Taos and other places.
So can you break down statistically, primary care, referrals, and labs?
No, I can't do that.
But surely your software system is able to print out the number of patients seen and the type of services, so are you willing to provide a printout of this to the Commission? It's a software program you can easily access. Every hospital has it to give you a demographic, and you're telling me you can't do that?
No. I would be happy to provide that, but I'm not sure what you're asking for. The number of primary care patients?
A number of times people came in for primary care, number of times people came in for lab referrals, and number of times people came in for the other services for referrals.
Well, of the 1,082 patients in calendar year 2014, 62 of them were sarboxone patients, and the majority of the remaining 950 patients would be primary care patients.
So you're-
Asking for lab referrals. I don't have that number.
All right. You're expecting El Centro to take all these patients over, and you claim that this service is not needed. I disagree. Were you able to, I would like to see your last three years of cost reports submitted to the federal government for the Pinellasco HRHC, and are you willing to provide the Commission with this information?
I think those are public documents.
Would you be willing to provide that with the Commission and not make us look for them?
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fambro.
If I can give. Ms. Bradley, I think one of the points first that Commissioner O'Donnell made is kind of ringing in my ears is, why do we always hear "after the fact"? I mean, this didn't just happen overnight, and then we're the last ones to hear. The public is the last to hear and everything, "after the fact," and I just don't think that's good business. Why aren't we kept in the loop? I mean, we're certainly the ones when they came in 2012 for extra funding and stuff like that. I mean, they're beating our doors down, but now something like this, this significant is happening in our community, in our county, and we hear about it after the decision's already made.
I understand.
Laying off 33 employees, local employees, I'm sorry, was reported after it happened. Why don't we have better communications? Why is it "after the fact"? The decision's made, and then you come to us, and there's nothing we can do. We can't, we're certainly not going to support you on this. I mean, I don't understand. I feel this is going to be a burden on our ambulance. I think it's going to increase if people can't run down to the clinic that they're used to, and you know, that clinic was put after El Centro was already there. So I don't understand the analogy that El Centro, you know, they collect better and everything like that, so we'll just let them have it. Well, then why did you go into competition with them in the first place?
That was a decision that was made long, long ago, and I don't know the rationale for it.
Well, however, it became something that those people came to expect. I talked to two people this morning at Super Save that are absolutely lost. They don't know what they're going to do after April 1st. I know what they're going to do. Obviously, they're not going to go to El Centro for whatever reason, because they've made their choice, so they're going to call our ambulance. Was that, you know, does the county services that we have to provide for these people, is that even considered when the board makes these decisions? Or is it just $178,000 loss, get rid of it?
I think the hospital is in such a difficult financial situation, and so we're somewhere around 20 days cash on hand. We're having difficulty paying our vendors, and so we're having to-
We hear that in advance, but we don't hear the other decisions in advance.
I'm sorry. I did have discussions with several people in advance of this, not the county commission, but I went up to Pinellasco and had a meeting with several representatives of the SPOT several weeks ago and mentioned to them that this would be discussed at the board or that it was being considered.
Understand. Is there ongoing discussions about a change possibly in the dialysis?
No.
No?
Dialysis service, and let me kind of explain how that works. So patients who are normally on dialysis, and so they're regularly receiving dialysis treatments three, four times a week, and so when they come to the ER or come to their physician's office and they need hospitalization, in the past, they have, if it's appropriate, have been admitted to Holy Cross Hospital. And if their stay was long enough, it was three or four days, and they required their regular dialysis treatment. We had a contract with Dialysis Center, Inc., which is a nonprofit located here in Taos, but I think it's a national chain. And so the arrangement that had been made was that we would pay for the ambulance to transport the patient over to the Dialysis Center, have the dialysis treatment, and then transport them back. And so we had a contract with DCI, Dialysis Center, Inc., and we would pay them for the treatment, and we would pay for the ambulance back and forth. And so in, I can't remember, December or February, they gave us notice that they were terminating the contract, and they felt legally, they had rationale, and I'm not sure that I understand it all, but they terminated the contract and terminated the service effective February the 9th, I believe. And so we no longer have dialysis available to patients in the hospital. It's pretty common for smaller hospitals to not have dialysis services, and so we looked at the possibility of contracting with some other dialysis services, but it just isn't going to, it's not feasible for them. So the closest would be the unit that's in Espaniola, and they don't even provide contracted services to the Espaniola hospital, so-
And how are those patients going to get to Espaniola?
Well, by ambulance, but what I'm saying is, couldn't find, we wouldn't be able to find a contractor who would provide that service to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, did I just hear you say you're closing the dialysis clinic here in Taos?
No, 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 no. I'm saying that the dialysis clinic, which is a nonprofit and it's owned by a national chain, that they have discontinued their, the process where inpatients go to the Dialysis Center for dialysis treatments, but they will continue to operate as an outpatient facility.
Mr. Archuleta, a couple, in the last meeting, I'd asked if the hospital would provide minutes. THS provide minutes to the county clerk so that the public can look at those minutes. Have you received that yet?
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, no, I have not.
Mr. Brad, Ms. Bradley, will you provide the last couple of years of minutes for us that we can put on file?
They're available on our website, but yes, I would be happy to provide them.
Well, I understand there's only, you're not going back a couple of years on those. From my understanding, rural healthcare clinics were designed for nurse practitioners and physician assistants to receive enhanced reimbursement with the target of 21 patients per year, which you met, and only the largest RHCs have ever been able to support an MD with 41 encounters, which you have done according to your records. You've surpassed that. So to me, this is still, you know, I feel helpless. I feel frustrated because you've done it. There's nothing we can do. And with that in mind, when all else fails, Mr. Archuleta, I'd like to suggest that you prepare a letter to our congressional delegation, to Senator Sisnetos and Representative Gonzalez, to NMAC, to the Primary Care Association of New Mexico, to the Department of Health, and to the Taos News. And, you know, we want to know if there's anything else that can be done. We want to inform the legislative bodies of what's going on, and we want to see if there's any way we can pull out of this. And I understand you have problems finding doctors. I know it's a national issue, but we want to address it, and we want our congressional delegation and our legislators to know, and maybe they can do something about it, because obviously, everything you've told us, we can't change your mind to bring that clinic back. So if you could prepare that, and maybe we could approve that at the next meeting, take a look at it and see if we want to change or add anything to that. Thank you.
Steve.
Mr. Chairman, send you just a couple of questions just for clarification purposes. So inpatient services for dialysis, if somebody goes to the hospital for pneumonia and they're on the dialysis machine, you're going to be there more than two days, they're not being admitted to Holy Cross. They're being sent right now to St. Vincent's, is that correct?
It's being determined on a case-by-case basis. So if it looks like the patient would only be there for a day or two or until their next rarely scheduled treatment, we may admit them.
Okay.
But the other part of this is that dialysis patients are very sick patients, and they have a lot of comorbidities. They have a lot of problems, and so oftentimes, the best place for them is a facility with a higher level of care, a nephrologist and a number of other specialists that are not available at Holy Cross. And so for those patients who present at Holy Cross or at a physician's office in Taos, and it looks like the admission is going to be lengthy, and it looks like they are going to need to be transferred, we've had discussions with the University of New Mexico about the best placement. I've also had discussions with Bruce Tausen, who's the CEO at St. Vincent's, about referring those patients. So the patients have considerable medical records at DCI, and so it's important in terms of the continuity of care that those records are available. And DCI would certainly make them available to St. Vincent's, but because of their condition and their dialysis and all that sort of thing, the referral may very well best go to the University of New Mexico, because that's where the nephrologists are from, and they will electronically have access to all of the records. So their treating nephrologist is from the university.
So I guess my question goes back to the Commissioner's question. So for planning purposes, because we run the ambulance service in Taos County, could you give us some numbers of Pinellasco and also the dialysis patients that we're going to have to plan for, for ambulance service to, it seems like Albuquerque probably more than likely, rather than St. Vincent's? And what those numbers are, maybe some stats of what you guys did last year to help us plan and make sure that we staff up and have ambulances available to make sure that our constituents are taken care of?
We were averaging about six dialysis treatments a month, and that doesn't equate to six patients. So it might have been one patient who was there for two weeks, and we can get you those numbers, but we were averaging six treatments a month, and so that might be one or two transfers a month.
Extra. That would be dialysis, but we also would probably need something from, you know, how many people went to the clinic and how many people were admitted? Well, those people would probably be just transported straight from Pinellasco to Santa Fe, right? Or back to Holy Cross, if possible?
I'm sorry, Steve, I'm not-
Yeah, I'm just thinking out loud. I'm trying to figure out, because I need to gear up as far as for my ambulance services and making sure that we have availability within the county, but we also have transport available. So I'll think about that a little bit more. We're going to really need to start talking about those numbers and the miles and those kinds of things, because it's important.
Commissioner Fambro.
You said you own the land and the building, and Ms. Bradley, do you guys have any plans with what you're going to do with it?
We haven't made any plans yet, and I think the first thing that we'll have to do is look at the modular building and whether it, it's 14 years old, and so if it could be transported and what kind of shape it would be in after it was transported and those kinds of things. And we would certainly be open to other alternatives in the Pinellasco community, but we haven't made any plans.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, could you maybe elaborate? I appreciate you saying that, Ms. Bradley. What would you consider to be other alternatives?
I don't know what those are.
So you would be willing to work with this Commission to maybe find some other alternatives? Contention on your board's approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a good way to end this discussion.
Cindy, have you been in touch with El Centro to discuss how this is going to affect their?
We haven't done it yet. We didn't do it prior to another discussion, because we were, didn't want any appearance of antitrust or having discussions with another provider.
But there may be some ways that you'd be able to work with El Centro to-
Very interested in visiting with them about all of this.
Great. Well, thank you very much for attending and giving us the news and holding up under the questioning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, we'll move on to the minutes. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
I'll second that with discussion.
Go ahead.
For the record, Tanya Leherisey, her spelling of her last name is T, I'm sorry, L-E-H-E-R-I-S-S-E-Y. And on page 18, I believe, in talking about the water rights transfer, if you could please check the minutes, because I would like you to include that I stated leasing to the city of Berlin and Los Lunas, and the city of Berlin and Los Lunas was left out, and I do believe I did mention that. If you could check the minutes, and if I did say that, if you could add that. And also the discussion of HCP contract. It is June of 2015 that that contract expires, and I think you had stated June of 2016. And those would be my only amendments to the minutes.
Commissioner Gagels, will you amend your motion?
Yes, I will. I'd amend my motion with those changes that Commissioner O'Donnell requested.
I second that, thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. On to number eight, awards and presentations. We have a presentation of the Employee of the Year 2014 to Herbert Medina, MIS Systems Administrator.
Commissioner, if I could ask you to come down, please?
It's my distinct honor to present Herbert Medina with Employee of the Year for 2014. And Herbert works as our MIS Systems Administrator for our IT department, and he's been nominated as the 2014 Employee of the Year by the Employee Action Committee. There were 16 employees nominated- There were 16 employees nominated for this honor, and the Employee Action Committee is honored to present the Employee of the Year to one of the brightest stars of Taos County. Herb has continued to excel in his customer service for all of Taos County employees. We commend and the highest, we commend and highlight Herb's work ethic and encourage all county employees to strive for it. With him, he also has his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Herb Medina. And I want you to know, Mr. and Mrs. Medina, Herb is really appreciated here. We value his work, and we, all the employees like Herbie a lot, as well as his supervisor, Dave, and we're very proud of him. So I do have this plaque that I want to give Mr. Herb Medina. Along with that, he has, as Employee of the Year, he's entitled to two days off with regular pay, and he has $50 in gift cards.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Herb. Thank you, Herb.
What?
Phone?
No, no, I don't have your phone. I don't want to get all the calls that you get. Next item on the agenda is a presentation in recognition of the Firewise Communities in Guyana Canyon. Chris Coty and Nathan Sanchez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone. As we've been talking about, the Firewise Communities is a nationally recognized program by the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. And so what these communities do is pick themselves up and organize to protect themselves from wildfire. So we've had three so far, and we have two more, Guyana Canyon and Taos Ski Valley. And Guyana Canyon is recognized as Virginia Clark is the organizer for Guyana Canyon. Like to give her this nice certificate.
Virginia, did you want to say a few words?
I certainly couldn't have done it without Chris and everybody else, so it's making us feel better that we have a lot of fuel mitigation and a safer neighborhood, and we've just begun. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Virginia. It's a great program, and the community appreciates it. It's not just for the people who live in Guyana, but it's a safety measure for the whole community. So thank you, and to everybody up there working on it. And thank you, Chris. And we'll have to thank you again, because now we have another presentation, right? This is for the Taos Ski Valley.
And Taos Ski Valley doesn't have a representative here this time, but I will get this certificate due. Kathy Bennett has been the organizer there in Taos Ski Valley.
That sounds great. And so what are the other communities that are on board for this year?
This year, lined up so far is Pot Creek is looking to organize real soon. They are organized, they have a board, and they need their hazard assessment. And in fact, the NFL grant, we're working on that right now, the non-federal land, to start fuel reduction around the SMU campus in Pot Creek area. So they're lined up, El Salto, I mean, sorry, San Cristobal, and Latir, my home. So those are the next three that are definitely looking organized. So all told, we'll have, we have five right now organized Firewise Communities in the year, within the next year, so we'll have eight.
Look forward to those presentations, and it makes a big difference for a long-term period, so we really appreciate the work.
Sometime soon, I'd like to do a PowerPoint presentation about the Firewise program and really bring people up to speed here. And in fact, we're organizing a coalition. We'll start doing that soon to really have some clout as Firewise Communities.
We'll welcome that presentation. The more education we get out about this great program, the better.
Great.
All right.
Kathy's here.
Kathy's here. Just in time, Kathy. It's the roads. Thank you for that, Brent.
I'm really sorry I'm late.
Good morning, Kathy.
And recognize her for all her hard work, Taos Ski Valley.
And work has just begun, so we have to convince everyone that this is a really...
Well, Chris and the rest of us are working on it, mostly Chris, but thank you for your work on it and for everybody up there at the Ski Valley that helped out.
Tell the board of directors that we have the Firewise. Thank you.
Good. Thank you again.
Thank you all.
On to number eight, presentation on the facility savings report summary. And this is from Bill Kipnis, Senior Project Developer from Energy Control. Good morning, Bill.
Morning. Morning, everybody. Have to move this, they make them too tall. I don't know how that happened.
I've noticed that myself.
I never saw that. As a brief reminder, and some new commissioners, sometime back, I made a presentation on our company. Real quick review, we're Energy Control. I live in Taos here, representing the company. We're part of a larger network called Optera Energy, and Optera acquired this New Mexico company a couple of years ago, and we're the largest independent energy conservation measure company in the United States right now, and currently the largest provider of LED lighting as an independent contractor in the United States. So we, I asked the commission for permission previously to look at this facility, especially the detention area, as well as the county health building, agriculture, armory, and the old courthouse, for the purpose of, well, saving money on energy. To explore that, it was noticed by your staff that those bills have been escalating from a high starting point. To look at comfort issues throughout as additional project goals to reduce operating and maintenance expenses as well as utility expenses. Reduce what had been a growing need to replace and repair equipment for reasons that weren't always clear. Reduce the risk of major events which can shut down buildings and cause emergency type of expenses, which are more expensive, obviously, than when done as preventive maintenance. And to look at a couple other problems, one being a nagging threat of litigation over the completion of this building, whether it was done correctly. As well as, not on this one-page summary, the question of the transformer agreement between the county and the co-op, Kit Carson. And I presented a much larger report to Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Flores, Mr. Cordova, and Mr. Harmio, which of course is available. But at Mr. Archuleta's suggestion, a one-page summary for today would might be a good idea. And what did we find? We found savings for this facility alone on an annual basis, just in utility bills, of over $100,000, and that's per year. In operations and maintenance savings, we expect, as we move on in the work, to find at least that much. So it's, though, and I apologize for the length of time it took, we did come up with substantial results. We are in the business of guaranteeing energy savings, and we utilize existing New Mexico law, legislation which is designed to provide a program where the cost of the projects to do this can be provided in various ways, as long as a contractor who has met state certifications provides a guarantee to that effect. So that's kind of an overall view. And then to look at how we might do it, I had two different approaches. One, what we call commission this building, focusing on the detention center, but the whole building, which you had never had the advantage of doing when the building was complete. There were time constraints, there were financial constraints, there may have been contractual issues of whether it was owed to you, reasons I'm not familiar with, but it was never done. And so the first approach was to do that. And in doing that, we come up with a substantial amount of the energy and operating savings, not all of them during commissioning. The second approach is a more comprehensive one. It's the one that we are perhaps best known for, and that is this energy savings performance contracting, where as long as we're willing to guarantee the savings, we use that as the cash flow to finance a much larger retrofit of county buildings, something that you would typically do over a 10-year period, say, which we could now do now, using the energy savings that are generated to finance it. It's a fairly involved process with the state involving the New Mexico Finance Authority and the New Mexico Energy Minerals and Natural Resources Department become our partners and your partners in the process. And, you know, some of the advantages are, for example, not only does this building go through recommissioning, which it never had, it gets everything fixed, and a substantial amount of preventive maintenance. Certain examples more concrete, recently, there was a crisis and a large expense, and it was determined that a water treatment system should be added to the building. We looked at that very hard, because it was very expensive to the county to do it, and found that, though that is an excellent measure, it didn't get at the underlying cause of the expense to the county, which turned out to be something much different. So that's an example of what commissioning and what these do. Dull, measure by measure, it's about, you know, mechanical systems, but exciting overall in what it can do, increasing comfort and bringing projects to some of these other buildings that you would otherwise have to pay for out of your budget. For example, the courthouse, we have that wonderful old courthouse on the plaza. Energy savings for this project would pay for a new cooling system, a continuation of the heating system that was provided, substantially better building comfort, and lower risk of a catastrophic event there would be one example. So in approach two, I take it through a simple pro forma, which is, I've elaborated on more, where if the energy savings, we believe, would generate the ability to provide a million dollars in capital to spread out through the county at no upfront cost to the county, we think there would be an interest rate from the New Mexico Finance Authority on that money of about 2.5%. If it were a 12-year term, over the 12 years, we believe conservatively, it would generate not only the million dollars in projects at no upfront cost to the county, but upwards of 3/4 of a million dollars in additional positive cash flow. So it's a powerful program. In the United States, last year, these energy performance contracts exceeded $6 billion, all at the municipal level. Municipal and public-owned facility, a lot of it done at the county, city, and university level. We're currently involved in two other projects like this in New Mexico, one at NMSU in Las Cruces, and the other is McHenry County, who's using energy savings to redo about 30-something buildings with us. So renewable energy is part of what we do. We're a very large solar contractor, as you might imagine. So your staff asked me to look at leveraging existing investments in your roof racking system and some other places, and take a, I'm going to call it a swag, at a solar issue here, that if we added some $600,000 after 30 years, we generally finance solar over 30 years, we could be looking at a million, maybe $2 million of revenue from the solar plant to the county. That would depend a lot on where you'd want it, what it would look like, and, you know, and other factors, but one of the important issues in the solar field for you is that your bills from Kit Carson at the demand, high-demand periods of the day, what's called peak demand, are 40 to almost 50% of your current electricity costs, and there's not much Kit Carson can do about that, their hands are tied by their agreements for power. Solar has that unique ability to provide power at the time that it's costing you the most money. Interesting topic for the county. Procurement, very recently, the State, GSA, and EMNRD combined to issue a RFQ or RFP for these services, these energy services specifically, to provide these guarantees and do this work. They awarded, I'm not sure how many, but Energy Control was awarded a pricing contract with GSA, where our, how we determine what we charge for different measures is in the contract. The state decided to use a national pricing system called JOC. And so we have that award, that's an option. We're one of the largest, I think we're currently the third-largest contractor for CES. We're one of the largest, I think we're currently the third-largest contractor for CES. We were awarded the energy services contract from the Northwest Council of Governments, and so that's another avenue, but I leave that to you. It's a, you know, it becomes a simple process once you go through it enough times, but at first it can seem, you know, kind of overwhelming. Some, I mean, McHenry County formed a task force, Taos Schools formed a task force of people to kind of focus on it. That works very well, but there's a lot of ways to approach that. And I guess I'd open it up to questions.
Mr. Flores, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Andrew, good morning. When I first was approached by Mr. Kipnis, the big thing that came to my mind is this building was never commissioned, which is something that is done in a large construction site like this, they run through, and they make sure that everything is working properly and as design specifications suggest and so forth. That was never done, so we don't know that everything is running as should. There's no way to tell until you go through and you commission everything. At that point in time, we're able to understand or realize if there are any energy savings that could be had, and I feel that there is a substantial amount. We don't know, and we won't know until we go through the proper steps. Obviously, there's always a fee associated with this, but in regards to, well, Mr. Kipnis is knowledgeable about the state, there's a little bit of, there's a process, and there's no upfront cost to the county. I think there's savings to be had, an upward a quarter of a million dollars, or a substantial amount annually, $100,000 annually that could be directed to ambulance services, to other parts of the county. I think for us to continue to inhabit this building without ever having it being commissioned and knowing what kind of energy savings we can achieve, would, in my mind, that's my personal opinion, be a little silly, and I'd like to see if we could save money, save the taxpayers some money. Mr. Kipnis has assured us that there is a substantial amount of savings that can be found, and they guarantee it. The state backs it up, and he'll explain all that, but, you know, I'm really supporting it, but I think it's a win-win, in my mind. I've never gone through this process before, we're doing it at the Taos Municipal Schools, we're kind of getting the ball rolling on that as well, we have a lot of old buildings, we're spending a lot of money on utilities, it's a big chunk of our budget, and anything to save money, I think is great.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Could you explain what you mean by commissioning a building? Could you explain that to me?
Mark, what happens, especially with a building of this complexity, but really any building, is that you have, you have systems that are designed to provide, obviously, comfort as well as indoor air quality, and these systems have gotten complicated enough where they really work together as one system. So let's say, for example, you have a day like today where it's very cold at night, and you want the building to warm up in the morning before you get here. You don't want it to, you don't want it to warm the building all night. Once the day warms up and there are occupants in the building, do you want to keep heating the building, or really, do you have enough heat in the building already where what you want to start doing is introducing more fresh air for indoor air quality? And in commissioning, you balance all these building issues, and you make sure that all the systems are working properly. So you would, you create, you test all of the systems, you test the controls for the systems, and you test the mechanical equipment that is required in order to provide, in order for the systems to do their job. In general, that's about, maybe as best as I can explain it.
Just a basic summary of this would be, the installation of an HVAC unit at your home or a furnace, the contractor comes in and installs your furnace for you, and let's say they just leave, they put it in, the wiring is hooked up, the gas is hooked up, they make sure there's gas pressure, they make sure there's electricity there, put it in, and they leave. And then you go and you turn up your thermostat, and it just, things don't seem to be working right, you get your gas bill, and your gas bill seems really high, and you're wondering what's going on. Well, when you install a furnace at various elevations, you need to derate an orifice in there, and that's where the gas pressure comes out. If that orifice isn't properly derated, the life of your furnace is going to be cut in half, as well as the efficiency of it, and so there's your gas bill, and then in half the lifespan of that furnace, you're going to be replacing it. So this plumber, this contractor, never went, they just got the furnace from Doll Plumbing Supply, Phoenix Mechanical, picked it up, threw it in their truck, drove to your house, pulled out the old furnace, put in the new furnace, made sure there's electricity, made sure there's gas, you know, Ms. O'Donnell signed here, you know, your furnace is installed, boom, they're gone. Commissioning would be, in a sense, or a really good contractor would install that furnace, would turn on the thermostat, check to see that, you know, the temperature is rising, they would check at each diffuser or vent, make sure you're getting good airflow, maybe one vent is opened all the way, and this one is constricted, so you're not getting any heat over there, so you're constantly turning up this thermostat, because this room's always cold, but it's because this vent is closed, this one's open. So commissioning runs through the whole gamut of the system, what it's supposed to do, make sure that that furnace would be derated, that everything's proper, and they would sign off, and there's companies that do this, there's such big money spent on such a large, complex systems, you want to run through and test all those individually, make sure that the plumber derated the orifices, make sure that they sized it correctly, making sure this and that, and, you know, it's kind of real questionable, you know, three, four years down the road, that this, that we're, I was suggesting that this be done, but it's never been done, so we can't ensure, you know, I'm not a mechanical engineer, an architect, a designer, whatever they may be, the professional to run in and check all these out, and, you know, I can't, you know, state to you guys that this is correct, that they're running correctly.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're saying when the building was built, it was never commissioned by the HVAC contractors?
It's a separate contract, and, you know, it's not required, it's not mandated, but it's a step in, I would say, the right direction.
It was never done initially?
Never done, and for what reasons, that's here nor there, we don't know what we're losing, we don't know what could be saved. But that would be the first step in this energy analysis, would be to check all our systems properly, and then at that point in time, we could determine that they're okay, they're running okay, or this one wasn't, this one needed some adjustment and so forth, maybe we didn't find as much as we thought, but there's some savings that could be had. I feel that there is.
Not under our warranty? Our warranties have run out with the contractors?
Warranties have ran out. It's just, you know, it's not to throw stones or anywhere, but it's just something that never occurred in commissioning the building, and, you know, as we continue to move down the line, things are going to continue to possibly break, and if we don't get in there and investigate and inspect and analyze, we're just going to, this broke for unknown reason, but if we get in there and we find out that it's not working correctly, we can make those adjustments to lengthen its life. In fact, I have an individual that called me the other day to look at their boiler, and the plumber that installed the boiler never derated the boiler. When I got there, the vent piping had holes in it, and when you don't properly derate for natural gas or propane, you get acidic gases and acidic compounds that are created, and they'll eat at your vent pipe, they'll eat at your boiler, and so when I got to the system, a big red flag was there's holes in this individual's vent piping, so we had to replace their vent piping. Further investigations show that the boiler, which was installed eight years ago, was never derated. This boiler could last 15 years, 20 years, but they're needing to replace it at half of its life expectancy because it was never installed correctly. And then checked and tested, they just took the money and ran, to be honest with you.
Neil?
I recognize anybody that was here at the time. Contractor was having options. Sanchez would know. But I remember talk about putting, and I don't know whether, it might have been an economic issue, everything always is, but there was also talk about, in the future, if they decide to already put the redundancy wiring in the chases. They do a lot of that in the jail, but I'm not sure whether they fought ahead and planned for if they ever did want to do solar on the roof that they already had, they didn't have to tear the walls open to run the wires. Thank you.
This building's ready to go for solar.
So are you familiar with the, what Neil and Commissioner O'Donnell have referenced?
Yes.
And it is in fact true that pre-wiring was completed to make it an easier fit for solar?
That's what I understand.
So the rough project cost is a million dollars?
Rough, roughly, well, and the way it works is we look at what we think the energy savings is going to be, and maybe, and not to make you feel better, but, you know, we, our focus is HVAC and energy, and even in a commissioned building, our expertise is to optimize the building's performance in terms of air quality and low energy use. It's, you know, it's something we're expert at. We go into, we go into new, fully-commissioned buildings and still do substantial energy savings work, and a lot of it is done through software and building automation, which at one time seemed like an esoteric topic, but which is now very standard. And so even had the building been commissioned, this same opportunity may have been in front of you. Clarify that. Another thing that I forgot to mention was our business model, which is, we can't, we work all over the state, and our company works all over the country. We do our own design, system design, engineering, software programming, we have about 20 service vehicles on the road, not nearly enough. Most projects like this are actually performed by local contractors, who then work under us. In case you're wondering about that, I just wanted to tell you what the whole thing kind of looks like.
Good news. How does the guarantee work?
Well, the guarantee works where EMNRD has grant funding available to take our initial study to final, what's called investment-grade audit. So they are willing to finance that part of it. And when we're finished with that study, we give you a precise figure of how much energy savings that we're willing to guarantee, and we generally guarantee about 80% of what we think it's really going to be, and we're conservative on the going-to-be part of it. Long as we're willing to do that, then we take, we take the guarantee amount and say, okay, under the state program, how much capital could be available to the county? It seems a little backward, but it makes sense when you think about the guarantee.
And the guarantee comes in the form of if the energy savings don't reach that amount, that you actually provide the cash?
Write a check.
You write a check.
One of my, well, one thing that's fun to do in the subsequent presentations is to give you a printout of checks that the company's actually written, and it's obviously double-edged sort, on the one hand, you look at it and you go, if you're good at this, why are you writing these checks? On the other hand, the whole point is that we're there, and what's our reputation, and what are we really doing? You'll see checks that we've written in the million-dollar range to a couple of universities on things that maybe the technology wasn't the way we thought it was going to be, or something like that. But don't worry, even when you add those up, and it will be in the millions, you know, the company's performed over a billion dollars in energy contracts, so it's not actually a large percentage. That's how it works, we write a check. The state requires us to fund measurement and verification of all the measures we install. EMNRD is actively involved in, as the county's consultant, and in subsequent years to look at the utility bills and say, we don't think the energy savings were there, there may be an issue of Energy Control owing some money. Well, do our utmost that that not happen.
What's the next step?
Well, I think the next step would be to decide whether, in general, this is of interest to you, and then I think I would prepare a more detailed timeline and flowchart of the steps, and would encourage some meetings with the New Mexico agencies who are involved in this. They like to sit down early. EMNRD really on your side as your consultant, New Mexico Finance Authority as the people, well, and, you know, New Mexico Finance Authority or other sources of capital as well, to get them involved early would be the next steps.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if the commission chooses to move forward on this, we'd actually have to comply with procurement, put an RFP out for that, award the RFP, and then move forward based on that. So this is all preliminary information, the commission had asked us to make sure that we found out this information, and so that's what's being presented to you at this point. But I also know that they are, have complied with the CES vendor and have been awarded that, so they would be a good candidate to move forward with, but we would still have to put that forward in front of an RFP, comply with procurement.
Mr. Malone?
Just as a quick modification to what Mr. Archuleta said, depending upon the scope of their GSA contract and the CES contracts, it's possible, I'm not saying it would happen, but it's possible that RFPs would not be required by procurement, it just depends on the scope of those contracts.
Well, based on those answers, I guess we're talking about some money at this point to continue the investigation.
Well...
Some fee, otherwise we wouldn't have to go out, right? There's a fee involved in the next step?
There is no fee. We are, in working with the state, we're able to bring to the table a grant for the investment-grade energy audit that's done, and the cost of that, EMNRD requires to be rolled into the project cost, into the financing, and for their repayment to come out of that. But our proposal is without any cost or fees.
But since there's a fee that would be rolled in, you would have to go out, is that the answer?
I'd have to understand whether anybody would look to the county to pay the fee if the project didn't go forward. If we're legally bound to the fee, whether the project goes forward or not, then we'd have to make sure that we complied with procurement, either by an RFP or by one of these alternatives to an RFP.
But if that's not the case, then we could ask for additional investigation work from these guys without...
As long as the county's not obligated to pay any fee, then there's not procurement involved.
And the state's provided an agreement for that, without characterizing it, I could provide it to you.
Commissioner Fambro, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say before, Commissioner O'Donnell reminds me of another statement I made in my campaign, that I'd like to see a lot of solar panels on this rooftop. Before you get that going, I'll go ahead and admit to that, and I'd really like to see us go forward with this.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we could separate out the commissioning and the solar project, and I guess my question is, let's just take, for example, the solar, primarily, everything's ready to go up on the roof here, what's the advantage of going with you and/or us just letting out to bed to see who would put the solar... would put the solar panels on the roof of, you know, the least expensive? So I'm trying to get a handle of why
Sure.
we should go with you on solar when we can just go out to bid and get that done that way.
Good question. You could, we, we've done a preliminary analysis on, on our nickel, and I, I don't want to be, you know, shy about saying that. We've put in a lot of work and our, our investment already, hoping that because of the state GSA pricing arrangement, you would be comfortable with our company and because of our reputation and scope of work. Specifically on, on solar, there's a couple of reasons. One, you could procure it without using your own funds. You could take any measure that we design and bid it out and, and pay the lowest bidder. What we do is, is more comprehensive. For example, if we were to put solar panels on this facility here, we would integrate it with the building's control system, so it's not, as Mark described, the contractor came out and he threw a new boiler in your garage. So to save, to optimize a solar system, you, what, what we, what we do is, let's say it's a cloudy day, or the clouds come at three in the afternoon, your air conditioning system has been, has been, has been blasting away, but all of a sudden your solar system's not producing energy. When we're done with a project, we actually back off the air conditioning system, bring fresh air into the building, which is cooler now because of the clouds, and maintain your very low peak demand charge with Kit Carson. Now, I know that's a lot to, to try to take in, but that's one example of comprehensive energy projects versus individual things done by individual contractors not talking to each other.
So what I hear you saying is you stay with us, but is that an added cost? When you're making all these adjustments?
No, it's not, it's not an add, it is, it is the project, so integrating systems is part of the project.
The guarantee of a loan that would pay for improvements to the building that would have long-term savings and fulfill Commissioner Fambro's promises is, is
A promising statement.
A statement, is, is a, and of course, we're all interested in, in conserving on energy and, and being more green and in addition to helping save money, helping to save the planet, it's a pretty hard offer not to at least consider further. Of course, the guarantee is contingent upon the financial health of, of your business, and so I'm sure we'd be interested in, in seeing those numbers too. But I wonder if we can take a vote just to ask for continuing the investigation pending the procurement issues?
Chairman, it's only on the agenda
Presentation?
For a presentation.
So let's bring it back to the agenda sooner than later, once you've had a chance to consider whether or not the next step that they would take would require procurement. But either way, we could, we could make a vote on it once we know.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Kipnis. It's an exciting proposition, and we look forward to hearing more.
Very much.
Thank you for your work. All right, the next item, Councilwoman Count Two, I'm sorry to make you wait, but hopefully that was of some interest to you. Here's a discussion regarding celebrating the life of Cesar Chavez and a countywide yard sale for economic stimulus.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Manager Archuleta and Mr. Malone. I find this to be an exciting prospect. So many people come to Taos because they love our culture, they love our heritage, and with the advancement of technology and the fast-paced life, we're losing a lot of our heritage. We've lost a lot of the use of the aseca's here, we've lost the use of our agricultural land, and we're fighting to hang on to our heritage. And Cesar Chavez, who many look up to in the same way that Martin Luther King was looked at, did just such fantastic things. And on March 31st of this month, it is National Cesar Chavez Day, which I hope that they would close the banks and close the schools to celebrate, because he was a wonderful person who was worthy of, of such a distinction. One of the things that I would really like to do is to educate our community and citizens about Cesar Chavez. And I have reserved the mural room on the evening of the 31st, thank you Brett, to have a presentation. In fact, I invited Arsenio Cordova over here because he's so knowledgeable about Cesar Chavez, and, and it's his video. So I have a question for you right now. I was wondering where you stand on the county lodgers tax, is there still a board?
Yes.
There is? Who, who runs that?
Actually, our clerk does, and Valerie, so Anna and Valerie do, and they're right to your right there.
Okay. Thank you.
And we actually have a board also, a lodger's tax board.
How often does that meet?
They could answer the question for you.
Oh, okay. Well, I, this is a prelude on the 31st to a celebration that I'm looking at August 1st and 2nd, which I'm hoping that the town and the county could collaborate and, and share on this wonderful thing. I'm going to be making the same presentation to the, to the town here shortly, and I'm, I'm looking for funding from, from everybody who, who could be involved in this. I think that it would be wonderful in, in August if we could celebrate Cesar Chavez and include everybody and, and have a big celebration. I'm not sure if it would be held at the park, I'm not sure if it would be held at the mural room, that decision I haven't decided on. I'm still working on, on a committee, and if you know anybody who wants to be on my committee, please let me know. Let me give you my number, just in case you have friends. My number, 779-9804. But this is the 45th year of the signing of the United Farm Workers Bill, which made such a huge impact on the migrant workers. And some of you may know, or some of you may find out today, that a lot of New Mexicans and a lot of Tausenios used to take part in the migrant work and used to travel to California and also used to go to Southern Colorado to take part in the picking of the potatoes, which a lot of people still do to this day. And I think it's a celebration that's worthy of, of everybody here in the community in, in knowing this fact. And is there anything you would like to say about Cesar Chavez? You're the expert in, in him.
My name's Arsenio Cordova. And you know, to show you my qualifications, I, I do have a master's degree in Southwest Studies with emphasis on
Oops, sorry about that.
Emphasis on Chicano Studies and Political Science.
At least it was about him.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I was just, that was audio about Cesar Chavez, I apologize. I didn't know it was going to come on like that.
Good, well, you know, I'm glad that it sparked the interest there to, to look it up. But you know, I just, I have a graduate, a graduate degree also in rural ministry and pastoral administration when I worked for the Archdiocese of Santa Fe. When I graduated from college, I, my first job was migrant education program in Cuesta and Cerro, you know, with the students there, because we had a lot of migrant students there. But you know, it's just, it's a tragedy, you know. Last week, we talked about water rights, you know, and you know, there were a lot of questions that came up, things like that, you know, that, there's a, that's a new commodity for the stock market right now, sell your water rights, you know, and when we try to save them, like in our community, we get chastised. However, you know, it's, it's become something that has to be discussed thoroughly, culture, tradition, people without a knowledge of their history is like a tree without any roots. And we try to fight our individual little fights, you know, and within a community when in fact, we should be addressing those all together. You know, just, it's sad when we lose our culture, our traditions, and, and we don't lose them. We're, I'm going to challenge you, because then our traditions aren't dead, they're asleep, and it's up to you as elected officials to wake them up, you know. So in, in a, in a way to wake them up, we have talked about celebrating the farm workers, we're talking about people wanting to do away with farming and choose recreation or, you know, everybody has their own ideas as to what we should do with, with our county and things like that, you know, tourism, you know, bringing in a new, you know, it bugged the hell out of me when I found out that the city council voted for, to have a Dennis Hopper Day. You know, I was a social worker at the time that Dennis Hopper was here, and you know, he brought drugs, glorified drugs to our community, and we celebrated him in the town, you know, because he was the hero of, of what we are trying to become in our, in our community. So I, I think that as a school board member, I tried to bring the New Mexico history back and the traditional things, you know, sometimes it doesn't work because you have opposition to those particular things, because we're, we're, what used to be a majority is now a minority. And we have testing, we have all kinds of protests going on with us, with the testing with our students, rather than bringing history to them like we should. And my grandmother used to say, you know, just, we die three times. We die when we breathe our last, second death when we are buried, and third and more tragic when we are forgotten. And you know, if we are going to forget what our culture and our tradition is about, and I know that, I have very confidence that you guys won't, you know, but I think that we can be swayed to forget about that culture and those traditions of farming and everything else. There was a man named Francis Fidel Garcia from El Prado, who used to take the youth from our communities to Grand Junction and to Color, you know, Colorado and California to work the fields, you know, before school started every year. And you know, those are the people that are our heroes, and we have to celebrate that, you know, so even celebrating Cesar Chavez Day, we not only celebrate some, somebody in California, he died in New Mexico after meeting with the farm workers in Hatch and Las Cruces, so we think that that is one of our heroes, that you will support this effort that Councilwoman Count Two has brought forth. But you know, we are qualified to do the presentation, so I just, maybe you can learn something if you come.
Anyway, on August 1st and August 2nd are the days that I've chosen that weekend because of availability of the mural room or, or even the park to have the celebration for Cesar Chavez. That's just one of the things, though. The other thing I wanted to bring in front of you was a possible collaboration between a county and town yard, first annual countywide town yard sale. Did I say that right? I, I look at this as it being possible to have an economic stimulus. This is something that would, I would really like to see advertised starting in May, May, June, July, to try to get the entire state interested in coming to our Taos County, Taos Town Yard Sale, because who doesn't love a yard sale, right? Especially when they're all bunched together. I think it would bring heads in bed, and it would be a good thing to expose people of, of, from Southern Colorado or from throughout the state to come to Taos. And I just wanted to put that bug in your ear so that you would realize, you know, that it's something that I'm going to be working on and something I'm going to be looking to your leadership for. Do you have a question?
Well, we had Commissioner O'Donnell first, and then Commissioner Fambro.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I happened to be in El Paso during Cesar Chavez's funeral during that time, 1993, according to what I was Googling. And I do have a video of his funeral that I'll dig up somewhere. It's classic. I think at one point I had given to some of the previous Commissioners, but I'm willing to help you on the event, so anything I can help you do, I think a march would be good. And if I may say, that if Cesar Chavez were alive, he'd probably want to protect the water rights for agricultural purposes.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And I appreciate you offering to help with that. I am looking for committee members. It's, it's an important thing, it's for us to remember our culture and our heritage and, and what we took part in. But also the yard sale, which could, you know, bring some, some GRT when people are here, coming to our restaurants and staying at our hotels, because I want to do a weekend-long event with Cesar Chavez, but a two-day yard sale as well on August 1st and 2nd. So I, I hope that that's an idea that's of interest to you. The county would be a little bit harder, because I would need to make connections with people in Chamosal, Penasco, if you could help me with that.
They usually have a, a year, every year they have a big yard sale up there, so.
I saw that in, in July of last year, that Penasco had a big yard sale. The Costilla, Amalia, and the outer areas are, are places that I, I really need to speak with people and reach out in those areas to see who would be willing to help to organize in those areas. In town, it would be at people's homes with, of course, yard sale signs all over the highway, but I'd really like to see about a centralized location or two, which could possibly be, since it's a weekend in your parking lot here, and another one in Kit Carson Park, so that people will be going back and forth. And I am going to be reaching out to the different organizations to see if maybe they would want to do fundraising for their organizations through these yard sales as well. But just to, to get as many people as excited as they can be in, in raising money and, and you know, people all over the state love yard sales. I know whenever I'm anywhere and I see yard sale sign there, I make a right or a left and, and I'm hooked for a while there. And it's not like I need one more thing to put in my house, but you know, that's just the way it goes. Somebody else's trash is somebody else's treasure, so they speak. But I just wanted to pass that in front of you, and I really appreciate the time that you've given me, that I, that you put me on the agenda. And I will be back again on a future agenda to speak with you again.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman, I'm just, I think they're great ideas, and, and I enjoyed your email when you sent it to us a few weeks ago, and, and I thought you got good responses. I'm curious, though, how this fits with the recent discussions at your meetings, having to do with the RFP process, the anti-donation, which I didn't, I don't really understand that argument on the events like this, because you're talking about Kit Carson Park and, and stuff. I, so where does this sit with all of that?
Well, there's actually a special meeting this afternoon at 1:00, and that's one of the discussions that I want to be talking about. And over the next few weeks, learning as much as I can to see what the process is that I also have to go through with the town as well, so.
Because I, one of the preliminary answers I got on that issue, the anti-donation, is it doesn't exist in things like this, but it'll be interesting to see what you guys find out through your, your meetings and stuff. But I hope we proceed with it. I mean, I respect Mr. Cordova and his, and his teachings have always been, we grew up with his wife beating us over the head with a ruler, so I look forward to, to his presentation.
Well, I look forward to Well, I look forward to you being there. That'll be wonderful, and as, when, the more I learn-
As soon as you guys decide on your side of the town, what, if it's gonna be legal to do or anything like that, we'd be interested.
I will keep you updated on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and it, I think it, it will be an appropriate celebration for Taos. I'm old enough to remember his work and, and its importance, and so I think we all look forward to it. And I'm sure staff will work with you on the yard sale ideas, which are also interesting. And so, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Cordova.
Keeping people for the weekend would be a wonderful thing for the entire community. Did you like that, that picture I gave you up there of Cesar Chavez?
Really quite nice, yes.
Beautiful, isn't it? Wait, look at the mural. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move for a five-minute break.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Done. We have a motion to come back into session after our long five-minute break. Commissioners?
Motion to, oh, do we have to motion to come back in?
I think we do.
Right?
Right. Yes, second.
Motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Where were we on the agenda?
Contracts, MOUs.
Contracts, MOUs. Mr. Malone, this is a discussion regarding the approval of an agreement with the town of Taos relating to water rights for the county complex and the purchase of additional E-911 goods and services.
Mr. Chairman, this was an agreement that this commission previously approved and that the chairman signed. It was sent over to the town. At the last town council meeting, the town approved it with one additional sentence. And so, I'd like to, which I am gonna recommend that this commission approve, but we have to make the two documents line up. If it, direct your attention to the last page, which is 6B, the second line, the value of the water rights is $90,000. They added that, that sentence. And that's their, by ordinance, that's the fee that you pay based on $10,000 an acre foot. So, it, it's consistent with the rest of the agreement. I thought it was already clear in the agreement, but they wanted it to be clear. So, my recommendation is that we approve the version that they've now approved.
Mr. Chairman, so that we don't spend the hour and a half that they did, I make a motion that we accept it.
I second.
Yes.
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 That's how you work together.
Thank you, Bob. Onto number 10, Department Matters. This is a discussion regarding Resolution 2015-14, authorizing the county to submit an application to the Department of Finance to participate in the local DWI grant and distribution program. And we have Herbert Valdez, our DWI coordinator. Good morning, Herbert.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Malone. In front of you guys, you have a resolution so that we can participate again in the grant application for fiscal year 16, the application for the DWI grant and distribution funding for the DWI program here in Taos County. Does anybody have questions?
I have none. Commissioners, if we have no questions, do we have a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chair, to approve Resolution Number 2015-14.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Herbert.
Also, I believe that there's gotta be a little bit of discussion on this, on the grant distribution funding application cover sheet, so that you guys know what the amounts are that I'm applying for. Under the grant, we're gonna, we're proposing to apply $12,700 under prevention and $29,170.99 under distribution for a total component of $41,870.99 for the prevention component. We don't do the enforcement, because we supply them with funding from the, the Mexico Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Division. We apply for a CDWI grant out of that one, and we buy equipment for them. So, that one's blank. And then the screening component, if you notice that we're only asking for $24,113.97, and that's to fund the person that's entering the data and doing the screenings for the program for all the DWI offenders that go through our office. And those are, that's a court-ordered mandate that they have to take that screening and assessment. And then for treatment, this is the first year that we were trying to provide-
Before we go to that, Mr. Chairman, Herb, I actually had a discussion with Johnny Rodella recently, and, and your numbers are probably not reflecting what we do in municipal court, because we do, we use a different HRDA to, to be our probation office. So, I'm gonna work with Judge Chavez and Johnny to try to get those numbers so that we can combine them. Granted, we don't have that many in, in municipal court. However, I, I think to get the true picture, we need to somehow bring those numbers across to you. And, and I did have a good meeting with Johnny on that. So, we'll work on that to, and that would be true countywide numbers if we-
Yes. DFA already knows the situation with Judge Chavez and what's going on with HRDA. We did have a meeting with Judge Chavez and DFA to try and resolve it so that we could get all the clients screened through our program. But being that it's a municipality, we don't have the teeth to say that-
Yeah, but I just think it's important that we get the numbers in, so it-
Yes, and it would be important like that. It shows that we are capturing everybody.
Yeah, and, and, you know, because the municipality does use a different program, but I, I think the numbers is what's important that we-
Yes, I agree. So, moving on, this is the first year that we're proposing to, to fund treatment in our program. And we're, we're gonna apply for $1,670 from the grant, and, and there's gonna be some more money from the distribution, but it's coming out of the House Bill 16 funding. And they are requiring us also to do what is called the evaluation for our program. They're giving us three years to do evaluations, starting in fiscal year 16, because they gave us $36,863 out of the distribution for House Bill 16 funding. It costed, it's gonna cost us about $33,000 just for the compliance evaluation. So, we didn't have enough money to do any more evaluations but the compliance office, and they said that we could use the money on other new and innovative things. So, for Taos, I asked the question to, to the head over there, Julie Cropkell at DFA, and she went ahead and allowed that we could apply that money to treatment, because since Taos County is doing it for the first time, it's new to our county. So, we will be able to apply those $3,000 or $4,000 that's left over from House Bill 16 into the treatment component. We will be entering into a contract with Rio Grande Treatment, so that they can take care of the clients for us. And what that initially does is that it pays for the clients to get their treatment through there, through our program, without it having to come out of the client's pocket. Okay? And then under compliance, monitor tracking, they don't have a budget on grant, because they tell us that we have to use the monies that they collect throughout the year through their fees. So, what we do with that funding is we kind of put that funding so that they can do their operating costs, their supplies, their travel, and all that kind of stuff. So, that's what the budget looks like for the, for the grant on, on that one. And that's what we use as in-kind match. DFA allows us to use that type of money for in-kind match for the program. Also, for, for Norma and Johnny as compliance officers through the distribution, it'll cost us $110,417.31, which is the total component also for, for the compliance component. For coordination, planning, and evaluation, I have added $1,670 for operating costs and supplies and travel and everything that I have to do as a coordinator. And through the distribution, $65,168.96 for a total of $66,338.96. For alternative sentencing, which is our teen court, and next week, I mean, next meeting, you guys will be seeing a resolution if Mr. Malone approves it. On, I'm applying for funding for a juvenile adjudication fund grant, which we can use in the teen court program. But for that one, for now, under the grant for the supplies and, and, and travel for, for teen court, it'll be $829.01. And to pay the coordinator, it'll be $29,170.99 for a total of $30,000. That is the maximum allowable by DFA for us to do a teen court in Taos County. So, the total amounts for this request is gonna be $37,111.01 for the grant. The total for distribution will be $294,905.22 for a total of $332.16.23. I mean, $16.23. Is there any questions?
In the likelihood you'll get all $37,000?
More than likely.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions related to his, I, I really want to say I like the statistics, and I, this section where alcohol involved fatalities, that 2009, there were seven. 2010, there were five. 2011, there were six. 2012, there were four. 2013, there were three alcohol-related deaths. And do you have the stats for 2014?
Those have not been released yet, because they're still putting them together. We won't get to see those ones probably until next year.
And it, it looks like DWI is, total arrests for DWI in 2012 were 174. In 2013, it was 199. Would you like to get those people out cleaning trash?
That, I believe that we do have a program out there that, that addresses that. Yes, yes, we do.
If you could expand that.
It's on the agenda today.
No, it's got tabled, I believe.
Oh.
It's ready. No, that's not the item that got-
That's not the agenda. It's travel.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. And just, I just, one more statistic, because I find these interesting. For the past 15 years, New Mexico's death rate from alcohol-related chronic disease has consistently been first or second in the nation, and 1.5 to 2 times the national rate. So, wow, that's not a good statistic.
No, it isn't. And I tell you that from all the statistics that I was reading, Taos County sits in the top 10 for a lot of statistics related to alcohol. So, we still have a lot of work to do here at Taos County to address a lot of issues relating alcohol abuse and, and DWI and the whole thing. But we're still working at it, and hopefully, one day, people will start realizing that it is, it is not very good for them to be out there drinking and driving. It causes the community and everybody a whole lot of pain and-
Well, the problem you said in here in this report is most of these people, a lot of these, they don't have jobs. So, it's, it's such an interwoven problem.
It is. I mean, with, with the poverty, poverty rate that we have here, and then a lot of people not having jobs, and I saw a statistic there that all the people that were going through our office, a lot of those people either are not working, or they're only, or they only have temporary jobs. So, that kind of adds to, you know, when they feeling down or whatever, they probably want to, the first thing is the bottle.
Well, it's always been a big problem in Taos County. You guys are doing some good work that is helping us move forward.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, 10B has been tabled. Onto 10C. Sheriff, have been waiting patiently. Thank you, Sheriff.
Morning.
My intent was to address the audience primarily, as well as you as the commission, but it looks like there's more in front of me than behind me, so I'm gonna stand this direction.
Well, you do have the viewing audience, so.
Yes. This is a, the beginning of public information-type meetings and updates that I, as the sheriff, want to do to the constituents and to the commission for the unity and the best of the community. And I think these type of things are gonna be important, and probably on an as-needed basis, depending upon activities and so forth, but most likely quarterly or, or something like that. But we can certainly do more as we get into it and, and make that determination. As you know, I'm just over two months into the new office. I've had a lot of internal and external issues and things that we've had to deal with and address, streamlining the effectiveness of the sheriff's office, the response, the needs of the department, and certainly the needs of the community. I am thoroughly convinced that we need to get buckets of asphalt and shovels and put in the back of our unit to address pothole issues, but I know the commission is working diligently on that as well. Just getting outside-of-the-box thinking a little bit there. We currently have several initiatives that are, that are going on, and we do have a lobbyist for the sheriff's office. He is working diligently with appropriations through the legislative session as we speak. Have two bills, each are for $100, one's through the House, one's through the Senate. Those look very promising. Gave meets, calls with me very regularly, and I know manager Archuleta has contact with him probably more often than I do. And things are looking very promising for the county on all levels of that. Each is for $100,000, and those will be slated to replace our aging fleet of units and repeater radios for each of our sheriff's units. And just a little bit about what repeater radios are. Right now, the handheld communications throughout the outlined communities is very stressed at, at best. We can't talk back, neither can other public safety responders from a 5-watt handheld radio. The 50-watt Kenwood system that we intend to install in our cars essentially is a repeater in and of itself, so our handheld will only have to reach our police unit, and then it rebroadcasts and goes to the mountaintop repeaters. And there are seven of those that are our primary communication source for the county, as you're well aware of. I'm very pleased that working with our local OEM, Dominic Martinez, funds were able to be shuffled and transferred, and we are able to buy 10 of those. That order should happen today. There is a licensing aspect, because it is a repeater and it is a, an additional frequency. That's of a very minimal cost, and those will be licensed to the, to the sheriff's department. So, I'm pretty excited about that. Through some other funds that I've identified cost savings in, I intend to buy five more out of this year. more out of this year's budget, leaving me ten more that I'll have to buy out of the appropriations funds, um, should we get those. So that's the update on that. I'm pretty excited about that. It's going to greatly enhance the safety of, of our deputies and responders, and I'd like to also extend this to, and I already have, to other public safety as well as Cuesta.
Sheriff, those are what's in the new state police units, correct?
It's similar to what state police's unit, units have, but no, it is not, uh, exact. It is, we are getting this through advanced communications, and after looking at what would best fit the county's needs, uh, we chose to go with the Kenwood, uh, system, which includes handhelds with speaker mics, drop-in chargers, um, the mobile radio, both new coax's and antennas with installation. Each unit runs just over three thousand dollars turnkey per unit, per officer.
And they're out of service, how long does it take? The installation takes how long?
Well, the, the, once the order is placed, the licensing is probably going to take a few weeks. Once the licensing is done, it's in the contract that they will actually come and do the installs here in Taos, so I will not have to shuffle my units of three or four at a time to Albuquerque for the installation. So that was included in that price agreement.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So with that, um, talking about units, we have three of our new units in service. This is, uh, a continuation of what my predecessor had in place. There are actually four units that were purchased. They are all-wheel-drive Ford Explorers. They're white, and the decals haven't been put on yet due to the inclement weather that we've been facing the past week or so. But we do have, uh, decals that will be going on those. Those are marked. They are currently in service. And we have two more that are on order. One is, um, at the installer, waiting on one particular bracket for the console unit, and the other one was identified, uh, through cost savings of our current budget, and I was able to order it through L A P F, the Law Enforcement Protection Fund. And we hope to have that within the next, uh, ninety days or so. I inherited, uh, an inventory of fifty-seven vehicles in my fleet. I couldn't find fifty-seven vehicles in my fleet, so I got with our fixed asset manager, and we went on a field trip one day, and we were able to find twenty-two vehicles that, uh, we currently have that are in various state of disrepair, non-operational, uh, at least nineteen of them are. Those, uh, we've collected the make, model, serial number, VIN number, mileage, photographs, and those will be going up for auction, and that money will then be brought back into whichever appropriate line item budget they were purchased from originally, whether that be appropriations, L A P F, or general fund budget. So we're currently working on that to kind of clean up some of our fixed assets a little bit within the department. A few weeks ago, we held in conjunction with, uh, the other law enforcement, uh, leaders around Taos County community, a series of three evening meetings. Those were held at one-twenty Civic Plaza at the town council chambers. The first night, we had about forty-five in attendance, the next night, considerably less, and the third night, we had about, uh, twelve or fifteen. These meetings were set so that the, uh, seven of us, uh, law enforcement leaders, myself, Chief Weaver, Lieutenant Bartinas from State Police was unable to attend, so his captain showed in his place, uh, Chief Left Hand from the tribal, Chief Bates from Cuesta, and Marshal Smith from Red River. And it was primarily not for us to talk, it was for us to listen. And, you know, we had some really good feedback, and we're now taking that data and compiling it into, um, a document that I'll be releasing once it's complete. Two primary questions came out of that. You know, what are we doing that, that you like? And how could we do better on the things that you don't like within our community? We listened, we took that, uh, and, and every statement that, that we made coming from, from our aspect was always open-ended with a question attached to it. This is the response to your question now, what would you like to see? Uh, I think that's very important that the community understand that their law enforcement leaders are open to suggestion and to doing better service within our communities. And with the reason, it was a very good turnout. Don't take this wrong, but it wasn't the hundreds of people that I'd hoped for, so we're expanding on that, and I'm now contacting, or in the process of contacting, the thirty-some homeowners associations that we have within our community and other venues to speak at. I've spoken at the G O P, I've spoken at Crime Stoppers. Commissioner O'Donnell and I had a meeting set up for Saturday in Pinellasco Community Meeting, and that had to cancel due to the weather. And I encourage each of you, um, elected officials within your respective districts, if you have these type of meetings, uh, please let me know, and I would be happy to come and, and sit with you, visit with your constituents, and listen to their concerns as well. Tonight, I'm going with, um, Commissioner/Mayor Gallegos to his council meeting in Cuesta to present and do the very same thing. I want the community to understand that, that law enforcement from the sheriff's department, um, has, has a different focus and different vision, and, and the community is included in that focus and vision. My goal of, of the unity of law enforcement, uh, has come to pass. We are doing very well. We are working together. We are serving warrants. We are doing initiatives together. We are, um, helping each other throughout the respective jurisdictions, and that's what it's about. We are doing threat assessments at our schools, we're doing school visits. We've worked with U N M campus on a threat assessment that we're bringing, uh, both the FBI and Homeland Security in to assist us with, because quite frankly, some things are beyond my abilities and my knowledge base. The visions and initiatives, um, my vision, as I've always stated, is to solve crime. I want to do that through reducing our response times and having those high-visibility patrols and regular business checks within, within the community. Those things are currently happening. I do not have the substations set up yet in the northern or the southern districts. Instead, and, and the reason for that is I'm lacking a couple of I T components to make that actually happen. But what we're doing instead is we have scheduled, um, accordingly, so that during the peak times of the evening, um, we try to have four nights a week. We've only been successfully having three nights a week of four-hour blocks of patrol in those districts. And it's, it's community policing at the core, and, and that's how we're, um, moving forward to serve our community the best we can. I will always take prevention of crime over prosecution of crime. Anything that we can prevent by being proactive, being seen in the community, partnering with organizations, I think will be far ahead. And we're in the infancy of this. You got to crawl before you walk, before you run. And right now, we're still crawling, but these, these initiatives are happening right now. We recently got a forest, uh, patrol contract. I'm going to get outside-of-the-box and think about that just a little bit more. Um, I've also got B L M that's coming onboard this year that wants to give us, uh, some, some patrol for their jurisdiction, some, some money for salaries, about six thousand dollars, I think.
Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, could you talk about the Forest Patrol? What that does?
Yes, I'm going to do that just right now. So the Forest Patrol and the B L M Patrol, um, traditionally, it's been for O H V enforcement, off-highway vehicle enforcement, registrations, kids riding without helmets and that stuff. We're getting away from that somewhat. We're still going to be doing that as well, but we're going to expand that into wood poaching and into, um, fire prevention, uh, efforts. We're going to dedicate one of our older, but still serviceable Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel-drive units as the Forest Patrol units. I see no need to take our good, best units and stick them out on rough forest roads. I want to dedicate one to that initiative, and if it gets beat up, it doesn't take a good unit out of service, so to speak. So with that, we're going to be looking for wood poachers. We're going to be, um, doing, of course, O H V enforcement, trespassing, damage to the forest, uh, those type of initiatives.
And trash?
And, and trash, litter patrol, graffiti, um, any criminal aspect. In addition to that, then, um, until a week ago, I was pretty concerned that we're going to be in a severe, uh, fire season and drought sooner than later. And while this moisture is, is wonderful, it did not make us turn a corner out of a moisture. You don't go out of a five-year drought cycle in one week. It takes a period of time to do that.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if I may share, uh, please keep in mind Forest Road four-seventy-six, that is notorious for trash dumping, and I stumbled upon, they'd thrown a lawnmower, a kid's scooter, and a bunch of trash. I Googled the name of the person who threw the trash, and he's a sex offender.
Okay.
And I gave the, um, information over to Tommy, and he did say he was going to be checking with your investigator, and I appreciate what I've heard, that you're going to be checking sex offenders.
And I'm going to speak about that initiative that we just completed as well. Four-seventy-six, if I'm not mistaken, we were there last week. Um, we found, um, a carcass of a deer that had, had the antlers harvested from it, and we found two, uh, dogs that had been dumped. Subsequent investigation leads us to believe that those dogs were not in, you know, inhumanly killed, as my first thought would have been, due to the wear on the teeth, the tartar buildup and so forth. I believe they died from old age. We, of course, collected those, as we do now. Animal Control does collect, um, animals from roadways and places, and we properly dispose of those, utilizing stray hearts, uh, method for that. So good point, and we will absolutely keep that. I know right where that one is. And yes, there's a lot of trash, and there's a lot of alcohol bottles, cans, and things down here. That's obviously a party spot that needs attention, so. Spent some time in the past few weeks, um, working on our pending cases and giving some attention to some cold cases that, uh, I have, have yet to really find anything that's leading me to believe that those are going to be solvable in any way. Various reasons for that, um, primarily being the age of the case and the lack of evidence that was ever collected from them in the beginning. So what we focused on is our highest priority cases right now. That obviously being, um, Ms. Roxanne Houston, the, um, shallow grave body that was found in the Carson area on Christmas Day. Through that investigation, we went from literally a, a bone that was found on top of the ground to the identity of Ms. Roxanne Houston, to a series of interviews that led us to persons of interest, that led us to a suspect, an actual naming of a suspect, and now that suspect, Mr. Ivan Decales, Jr., is in custody right across the complex. We go to prelim, uh, on that hearing in District Court next Tuesday, and my two, uh, primary investigators on that are tasked with making sure that our witnesses are ready for testimony and that our case and evidence is ready for presentation. District Attorney Donald Gallegos and ADA Ken Tyce will be the prosecutors on that case. I'm glad that we were able to work that through to at least some closure for the family. No one deserves the death and the pain that I believe Ms. Houston suffered through that event. We also just caught a pretty good break on an additional series of burglaries, storage unit burglaries, that have been occurring within our community. We now have, uh, well, we had identified persons of interest, and we now have one of those named as a suspect, and we're preparing warrants simultaneous to prepping for our big court hearing on that. It's going to lead us to probably the closure of about twenty burglary cases, in addition to, um, the ones that investigators had worked prior to my taking office. I've got big concerns as well with the Holy Cross, uh, closure, uh, that's forthcoming in Pinellasco, uh, with Tri-County and what's going on there with mental health services within our community. Some twenty-five-hundred patients seek treatment there, and although I don't believe it's going to happen, a closure of Tri-County would be detrimental to our community, as we all could appreciate. But the services, uh, do need to continue, and I, I certainly support whatever we have to do to make that happen. And, uh, so with that, I'm also considering, um, with the closure and the fire initiative, again, kind of getting outside-of-the-box of law enforcement's traditional duties, um, having our deputies be first responders and receiving at least minimal medical training and having medical response bags, uh, in our units to assist when, uh, if we are taxed and our ambulance services are out of town on transfers or tied up, as, as sometimes does happen in our community, we would be able to assist, as does the fire department already, with their rescue unit. In addition to that, the Forest Patrols, I think, uh, you know, the need for having the, the medical and the fire prevention, um, out in, in, in the forest areas is going to be critical to, you know, a successful, uh, non-fire season this year. So with that, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not prepared at this time to give, uh, data statistics. I, I am unable to pull that from my current U D S system. I'm excited for the new Spillman system that's going to be coming to pass and the sharing of those, of that information database and my ability to extract and tell you exactly how many burglaries and how many D W Is and so forth like that. I simply couldn't do that currently unless I went one by one through each day, and that's way too time-consuming. I'm not going to do it. I can tell you that we answered five hundred and twenty calls for service in the month of February, a four-week month. That excludes any civil process or civil standbys that we respond to. Those are actually tracked currently in a different manner. When we convert to the new system, we will track all of that data in, in one information database. We've cut our costs by about fifteen percent for transports from out of town, uh, simply by implementing a procedure that we already had in place that just wasn't being utilized, and that is the video arraignment. So from the larger facilities around the state, our magistrate judges and district court judges agreed to start doing video arraignments on cases where it's an appropriate means. Currently, within our facility, if somebody is housed here, we do a movement of that inmate to the courtroom. That's of minimal time value to me, but sending somebody to Hobbs, uh, and picking them up when we could do a video arraignment, um, was reasonably costly, so I'm, I've implemented that, and we have some cost savings that are going to be occurring, and I think that's only going to get greater as time goes on. That's about all I have. I told myself I was going to limit it to five minutes, and I forgot to check my watch when I started, but, um, finally, I just want to say, you know, I'm thankful for the snow and the moisture that we've gotten. Unfortunately, the next phase is going to be the mud, and, uh, you know, that's just part of it. Preparations are made for that. I want to commend, uh, our O E M and, uh, our E M S director, both Dominic Martinez and Joaquin Gonzalez, for throughout the weekend, staying in close contact with myself, with the Town of Taos Chief Weaver and, uh, Commissioner Fambro. I think you even had a part of one of those meetings where I was on a conference call. We had preparations in place. We were very concerned about, uh, snow loads, weight-bearing roofs, blocking of heater vents and, and CO poisoning and things within the, uh, within structures and homes. And I just want you to know that your, your team was, uh, making preparations. We had also civilian, uh, people on standby and ready to assist us in shoveling and doing welfare checks of the elderly and things like that. This is what teamwork's about, and I'm proud to be a part of this county and this community, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Sheriff. It's an impressive start to your tenure, and I think there's a lot of optimism in the community about it, and especially appreciate the, uh, work with the other law enforcement agencies and the county, and, as you say, the teamwork is critical, um, to, uh, to making it a safer, better community. So commissioners, uh, do we have any?
Stand for questions. I guess I forgot to say that.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to remind you, and the way you closed was actually what I wanted to hear, and thank you for, because we got two very fired-up guys that are wanting to be a part of any team, and, 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 uh, I think that's a more efficient way, because it's admirable, the way that the agencies are working together, um, throughout Taos County with the municipal and, and county. It's not supposed to happen, and you guys are pulling it off without a hiccup. But remember, we've got a couple of guys that got a lot of good energy and a lot of good ideas that want to be a part of the, the team, and, and, uh, that's better for all the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I completely agree, and as I am constantly reminding myself, that was one of my campaign promises, so.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'd like to say I especially like you wearing a gun.
Thank you.
I've seen him shoot, though. I'm not sure that's a gun.
It's an unfortunate part of the duties.
Well, then, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is item D. This is Mark Flores. He's going to, uh, ask for approval of a contract with Phoenix Mechanical on chiller number three. three.
Gentlemen, Chairman, Commissioner, I don't favorably like coming and asking for money additionally. I have some paperwork for you guys here. And I have the, everything kind of highlighted for you there, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioner. I'm just going to run through this real quick. Obviously on the agenda, I'm requesting some money, but I want to give you some general background on this stuff. We have a chiller that's down. And I know some questions have been raised. I've been confronted and asked and statements have been made that it was due to a lack of maintenance and so forth. That is not the case. These chillers, when they were initially installed by the contractors, they were mispiped or miswired. The chillers here, I have some notes here that each CGAM, which is a chiller, is a completely assembled hermetic package that is factory piped, factory wired, leak-tested, removed of any moisture and charged and tested for proper control operation prior to shipment. So these units are brought, were brought to us ready to work. They have Trane's Exclusive Adaptive Control Logic. I'm on the first page here. CH530 Controls. It monitors the control variables that govern the operation of the chiller unit. Adaptive Control Logic can correct these variables when necessary to optimize operational efficiencies, avoid chiller shutdown and keep producing chilled water. If you turn to page two with me there, I have a highlighted area for you guys as well. The chiller is equipped with a unit-mounted starter and control panel. This microprocessor-based unit control module provides accurate chilled water control and provides monitoring, protection and adaptive limit functions. The adaptive nature of the controls intelligently prevent the chiller from operating outside of its limits or compensates for unusual operating conditions while keeping the chiller running rather than simply shutting off the chiller. If problems do occur, the CH530 Controls provide diagnostic messages to help the operator in trouble shooting. If you go to page three, I have a little tail dragging down from a black rectangular box there. That is the unit that needs to be replaced and I'm going to be requesting funding for. It is a heat exchanger. To the left there, you have a large pipe intersecting that big black box. It's coming in. It's the larger, probably four-inch diameter pipe. That brings our glycol into the heat exchanger. And then the two pipes coming from those small-looking compressors, that's our refrigeration and that's where the heat exchange occurs. If you go to page four on the handle I gave you, it's just kind of an enlarged area of what the heat exchanger is and what needs to be replaced. Page five is just a description of what needs to be field-supplied and field-installed when these units are shipped and placed in their location. The wiring needs to be installed by the contractor. The piping needs to be installed by the contractor. All these extracurriculars that I have highlighted here need to be installed by the contractor. You go down to the next page, there's a startup checklist. The reason why I included this is because I do not know if this was ever done. There's no record of it and I have not been able to receive confirmation of it. It's just for your information. Go to the next page. I have highlighted number 26. These units are designed to run automatically. They are automated units. They have, we have a building automation system. You turn the unit on auto, it should run. It has limitations. Shuts off, gets too hot, too much pressure, too low pressure, too low refrigerant, lets us all know. So they shouldn't run automatically. The next page here, there were statements made and I don't know if these got around to you guys or not, but that there was a lack of maintenance that caused these chillers to go down. That is not the case. These chillers, and I have here from my, when I attended, one of my old books I have in my office from mechanical technology here, that air, air-cooled chillers require little maintenance, which is one of the reasons why they are so popular. And I could go on and on and talk to you guys about that, but that's not what I'm here for. We do our best to maintain these. They have been maintained. There's two items that need to be maintained with these chillers. The condenser coils need to be, it's highlighted here on the second last page, at least once a year or more frequently if the unit is in a dirty environment. We have cleaned them on at least three occasions annually. And they sit inside a chiller yard, which is fenced in, blocked from the wind. So they are in a pretty clean environment. They're not in a dirty environment. The last page here is the reason why I'm requesting this money is we found restrictions in our heat exchanger. And it says here on the little note that I have highlighted here, strainer maintenance is critical to proper operation and reliability. Any particles larger than one millimeter entering the BPH evaporator may cause the evaporator to fail, requiring replacement. We're lucky the evaporator didn't fail and our heat exchanger got plugged. We were maintaining these chillers and the strainers and draining them. One could assume or past blame back and forth as to why this heat exchanger got blocked or plugged. What leads me to believe is construction debris. When a plumber, and I'm a plumber, I've done plenty of boiler installations. When you don't ream your copper piping, when the copper, there could be a rat that goes into your copper pipe, you pick up the 20-foot-long stick, you go, you solder it in, you turn on the system. Something caused this heat exchanger to get plugged up. I can't pinpoint why it is. So we're down to our last chiller that needs to be repaired. The other two are in 100% operating condition. I would like to request your approval to award Phoenix Mechanical a CES contract in the amount of $21,686.21 to replace this heat exchanger. So that the, I believe the litigation and so forth, whatever's going on, could finalize and commence. These chillers, to be real honest, we didn't really touch them the first couple of years because there's so much going on with the mispiping and contractor. He did, he said, she said stuff. We let things alone for those first two years. They needed to clear up their own mess. In the last year, I've spent Taos County money to repair these chillers to keep them operational. And the contractors came on board. I have documentation. I have a binder of our elevators, our chillers, our boilers in my office of what's gone on with those chillers up to this date. We need to get this chiller operational. There's really no way around it. Phoenix Mechanical is one of our best local contractors. They are a CES vendor. They've had their hands on our other chillers. We want to keep one contractor maintaining these 80-ton units. They run about $100,000 a unit. So we could go out to bid. That's going to waste more time. Phoenix is a CES vendor. There's stipulations that govern their pricing. So if we could contact other CES vendors, they're probably going to give us roughly the same price, give or take 1,000, 100 or so. I'm very confident in Phoenix Mechanical's ability and my relationship with them that they will perform the needed repairs and get this chiller up and running. At that point in time, all our chillers are 100% operational and maintenance is going to be on the facilities management department. And we will do our best to maintain them and keep them operational. But we're really at the tail end of this, what I would call, it's either a debacle or debacle, however you want to say it, of these chiller issues. So we just trying to wrap them up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Was this Donner?
You know, our construction administrator was here at the time. HB was our general contractor. Donner was our plumber. Donner did the piping and HB hired somebody to do the electrical.
And do you recall who the contractor was on the electrical?
I do, but I'm having a...
Can't remember their names. Aren't they liable for this? You said it was a miswiring.
This is where the litigation comes into play. We have three chillers, one, two and three. The two-end chillers were miswired or mispiped. So we could have changed the piping on them or the wiring on them. They went ahead and did the wiring. The wiring was an easier fix. Chiller one or three, vice versa, one was to do admin, one was to do the jail. They are mixed up. The jail initially wasn't getting any cooling, any heating. Mr. Sanchez went and he's done a lot of work, put in a lot of time. And something I stressed on this, these units are designed to, they're automated. They're designed to run automatically. You shouldn't have to go and manually close a valve, manually open a valve to get water here or there. It's been a big jumbled mess.
The chiller in the jail?
This is the last chiller, yes.
And this is the chiller for the jail?
Yes.
Or part of the jail?
Yes, yes.
Did you contact the electrical company? Did you con...
You know, Commissioner Donald, everything is out of warranty. This has been a construction and legal issue up until this point. I have actually gone out of my way to spend my money to limp these along. One may say that, may contradict what I'm saying to some extent, but I have spent my money to get these chillers operational and functioning while this whole litigation process has occurred. I have emails dated here up until September 30th. So these chillers weren't properly, so we moved in in 2011. And we're finally getting the chiller piping, plumbing, everything to spec to some extent in September, in August, September, October.
Did the company ever come back and try and fix it or...
They have worked with Taos County. They have worked. I've been out of the loop on that. It's been a construction, a legal issue and our construction administrator has been the one doing the communication with the contractors. And I've kept myself out of the loop. In regards to the chiller controls and stuff, I've kept myself out of, Mr. Sanchez has gone in and done some manual adjustments and this and that. And for me to grasp what he's done versus what the chillers are actually supposed to do, along with my daily responsibility is, I've kind of left it up to him.
I'm just wondering if we bid it out to the original provider or the...
They're not going, to be real honest with you, I'll give you my personal opinion on this and this is mine. I don't think they're going to want to come back and touch it. They got their money and we have our chillers. To be honest with you, it's been a big three-year ordeal, three and a half, four-year ordeal. And here I am being the one presenting when this should have been fixed initially years back. And I'm happy to do whatever needs to be done. But bottom line is that chillers need to be operational. They need to be up and running. Chillers one and chiller two are operational. At that point in time, we'll either go under contract with Honeywell or possibly train because you need a certified HVAC technician to operate, I mean to properly inspect and give you annual reports on these equipment. We could do maintenance, like the basic maintenance that I highlighted here, that's what we do. In conjunction with some of our other plumbers, Phoenix Mechanical, who hopefully will remain on contract as years come, they're a very good, efficient company. They will do a lot of the refrigeration. We don't have, you know, refrigeration gauges and all that stuff. And that takes quite a bit of training and education to get our staff up to par for that. So we don't touch none of that.
Could you just explain what the $21,000 is going towards?
So if you look on, I think it's, I believe it's in your packet. This should be in your packet there. There is a breakdown. There's a, there's a, it's right there, materials. The heat exchanger is $10,000. Pipe and fittings, we're looking at $1,000. Total material is $11,000. You come on down here, it lists everything. The CES contracted overhead and profit, it shows here $2,929. There's the labor and it breaks it all down here. They're estimating a total of 40 hours to do the repairs at $21,686. I could get quotes. We've been trying to move this along. It's, I just find it's, we've been trying to get these chillers repaired for some time and it's really a matter of time right now. In fact, I did get a quote from Hawk Mechanical and it far exceeded the $21,000. I could have provided that here with us, but I did not because CES is a cooperative educational services procurement avenue.
Mr. Chairman, that's why I'm asking you, why can't you get a quote from the people who installed it?
So what's going on, Commissioner Donald, let me explain. So what needs to be replaced came, the unit itself is packaged as a whole unit. It's, and that component came with the Trane chiller unit. It came with the unit. Plumbing was installed after the fact. I highlighted some areas there that need to be field-installed, the piping and the wiring. So you get yourself this box and you got to run your piping to it and you got to run your electrical wires to it. Somewhere in that piping, when that piping was ran to it, some contaminants were in that piping. Something plugged up that heat exchanger. The only thing that are in those, in that piping is glycol. It should be water mixed with ethylene glycol or, there's another type of glycol they make. I believe it's ethylene that's in the piping. So it's a liquid that runs through that piping. Something either film, debris caused that heat exchanger to plug up and chiller number three is not working because of that. So, and to answer your question, the installer is actually the Trane factory that built this unit at their factory, wherever it is in the Midwest. And they tested and checked, inspected, everything. When they shipped that unit off, it was 100% operational. So it arrived here in Taos and the contractors, plumbers and electricians went ahead and connected that all up. It's ran for a few years. That's a sealed system. It's a sealed system. There's nothing that should be entering that system. So for that heat exchanger to get plugged up, I mean...
Was it all the chillers, all three? Do we have problems with all three?
We've had problems with all three of them, sir.
And so the first two are fixed?
Yes, sir.
And are these amounts all part of the litigation, Bob?
The amounts for fixing them are not necessarily part of the litigation. Fixing them is necessary to the litigation in order to determine whether the HVAC, once they're fixed, is working properly.
I see. Right. This is what we've been waiting for, for quite some time, really.
Exactly.
There's a fairly big dispute over, what, a couple of hundred thousand dollars still?
I'd say less than 200, but...
Little bit less than $200,000. And one of the reasons we haven't been able to progress on the litigation is because we're not sure that...
Who said, she said?
Well, no, we're not sure that this entire HVAC system is going to work properly even once we do what we're doing now. So, once the last chiller is fixed, I guess we'll be living with it for some time and then we'll be able to determine whether there's any additional damages that we have to consider.
Mr. Chairman, the lawsuit that exists is against the architects and engineers, not against the contractor. The contractor warranties are passed. This chiller failure is relatively recent, past the warranty. I don't, I don't know whether Richard or Mark have developed a theory that there was something wrong with what the contractor did. But the contractor came in and as Mark explained, switched the wiring around. The wiring has nothing to do with the chiller contamination.
Well, if I may, Chairman...
And let me, let me, Mr. Chairman, I want to be very careful before we go into a bunch of detail about litigation. That's not on this agenda. That's something that should be handled in executive session. We can put it on the next agenda. I really don't want to waive the attorney-client privilege by talking about any of these things beyond what we've already done. I have no problem with what we've already talked about, but I'd like to not go further down that road.
All right. That's, makes, makes good sense. And the, as far as the CES contract, are there any other contractors in Taos or in the nearby area that also have this designation?
Phoenix Mechanical is the only contractor in our region. I have a book that lists the contractors in the various regions. And the thing, like I said, you don't, you don't really want to have too many hands in the cookie jar because then at that point in time, Phoenix Mechanical, they don't warranty, you know, it's the last guy did it, didn't do it right, so now I'm having to do this. And it's just kind of keeping, you know, keep your same mechanic. You have, your car breaks down and you get your clutch replaced. That mechanic replaces your clutch and then the mechanic then replaces, let's say, your slave cylinder and your master cylinder. So then you take it to another mechanic and it's just...
These chillers are supposed to last for how long?
They should last 30 years. And let me, let me just, this is my analogy of the situation. You buy a vehicle and you have your oil lines and your cooling lines mixed up and you're going to, your car is going to run probably out of the lot. But then once you, once it breaks down and, you know, there was some miswiring, mispiping, these chillers have limped along, they weren't installed correctly. And we could go around in circles... And we could go around in circles, bottom line is, they were not installed correctly. And they're sealed systems. The piping is sealed, refrigeration is sealed, they should not be opened up to the atmosphere whatsoever once properly installed, unless you have a glycol leak, you add more glycol, or your glycol ratio diminishes, so you gotta drain out that glycol and add new glycol. You have a freon leak, so then you fix the freon leak, and you add new freon. But you shouldn't be having to opening up, open up these systems. And they, they should actually be maintenance-free. This should have actually been a, one of the headache we shouldn't have had. This is a box that you run piping to, you run wiring to, turn it on, boom.
So, are we considering going after the installation in any way to try and collect on damages?
Again, I really would like to talk to this in executive session, Chairman.
Okay, well, I thought you had said that was separated from the architectural, but I get it.
Mr. Chairman, if we could take that up on executive session next meeting, I would appreciate that.
Definitely, definitely.
Absolutely. That's a good plan.
And my question is, would Train help in any way? They don't install these, they just build them. And so, would there be any help from Train to come in? And I guess, did you take pictures to document the damage, so?
Well, it's internal, so you can't really document it. And I've dealt with Train, I've gotten quotes from Train for various things, and they are always a little bit higher. They're always higher. So, I'll get, I could get a Train, I already know the game to some extent, Train's already gonna be higher. I got a quote from Hawk Mechanical, it's sitting on my desk, it's higher than this CES quote here. So, I've already kind of gone two quotes, I could contact Train and give us a third quote. Train knows they're gonna be higher, so they're probably sending it down the way, knowing they're not gonna get the project. I really like to develop a relationship with a competent local contractor, because if something were to go wrong, and we're going from one day to Phoenix, one day to Train, we gotta call out to Albuquerque, they're gonna put us on the back list, and we gotta jail with inmates in there that we have to. Phoenix Mechanical, they'll jump on it for us. And they've already won the bidding process for our contract, our annual contract, I've gone out to bid with them. So, they've, they've won that contract outright. They're a CES vendor, this is another avenue of procurement, they, they've been awarded this, so they meet those requirements. So, we're not being taken for a ride here. Obviously, they're in the business to make money and provide a service. So, they're gonna make some money, and they're gonna provide-
Mr. Chairman, does this come out of the construction fund? Where does this money come out of?
Mr. Chairman, may I, I believe our finance director, Leandro Cordova, did state in an email to me that it is gonna come from the construction fund.
Just a very quick comment, in case the Commission isn't familiar with CES. CES started as a schools cooperative, and it expanded to all local governments, and it actually goes through a procurement process for obtaining contractual relationships with these various CES vendors. So, it has been put out to bid. These folks have just bid directly to CES. So, the Commission can be comfortable with the fact that if it chooses to award this contract, it has gone through procurement, and it has been through a competitive bidding process.
Right, that's a, that's a critical point.
Thank you, Bob.
That was my question to Mr. Cordova, if he had any heartburn with any procurement, and I, I hate to ask that question, because I know how you finance directors will find any heartburn with any procurement, but-
How do you know that?
I just have heard, but the, does this meet procurement? Yes, no?
Yes.
Cool. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve, is there a number on it? The contract to Phoenix Mechanical for repairs needed for chiller three in the amount of $21,686.21.
Second.
Call for the vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Chairman, the Commission, believe me, I do not want to spend this money in this manner. So, I like to spend money on things that we need, you know, while we need this, but-
Right. Well, I'm glad there's only three chillers, so, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item is E, and this is a discussion we've been waiting for, the adult detention detainees being used for supervised street cleanups. Jonna Gonzalez, the administrator.
Good afternoon. By three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My presentation is on the supervised street cleanup for the detainees to be considered to be out on the street picking up trash, doing some stuff. So, what I did is, I did some research and come up with some stuff about what it would take to actually get a program like this started through the jail. First of all, a detainee has to be sentenced to the detention center. They cannot be waiting trial or other proceedings, and they cannot be sentenced to the Department of Corrections. The detainee has to be classified as a minimum restrict detainee. For example, the detainee cannot have any sex-related crimes, drug-related, gang-associated, cannot be on psychotropic medications, have mental health issues, violent, domestic violence or assaults. The detainees cannot be waiting, I already did that one. Detainees will need to be cleared for labor-intensive work from the medical department. They must be healthy in order to be out on the street. Detainees must be housed separately from general population due to the opportunity for them to pick up things on the outside, including sharps, drugs, anything that they would find out there and bring into the jail. We don't want the other detainees, such as violent offenders, who are not allowed outside the facility to get their hands on stuff like this. The detainees must be strip-searched before they leave the facility, and upon their return for every time they leave the facility. We would need up to two additional detention staff, in addition to who is already currently employed. We are short-staffed at the time, but if we were fully staffed, that would be adequate staffing for inside the detention center. We would need an additional two, two staff members to be able to supervise this outside the facility at any time.
How do you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, how do you come up with additional two employees when this would be once a month? Why, why would you need two more employees to do that?
The reason why I came up with that is because it wasn't specific that it was only gonna be done one time a month. For a street cleanup crew, if a detainee is sentenced to our detention center, and they were to receive good time for up to three to six months, we would want their good time to continue on a daily basis, not maybe just once a month. So, if we're looking at giving these detainees good time, we want them to be able to earn their good time on a daily basis. So, that's, that's how I did that. For the additional two staff members-
How many, how many detainees do we currently have who would fit the criteria?
Right now, I don't have any that would fit the criteria. I do not have any detainees who have been sentenced to our detention center.
And where did you get this data from?
It's, actually, I've gotten some of this data from other administrators, from other detention facilities, and also, it was highly recommended from the courts that this, it occurred this way.
How often do we have any detainees that are sentenced to our detention center?
In the last six months, I've had three.
So, the, the potential population of detainees picking up trash is three in the last six months?
Yes.
And you would need two additional staff? That, that doesn't make sense to me. I'm sure the Sheriff's Department would assist in the supervision outside the jail.
If that were the case, and we were to work something out with the Sheriff's Department, yes. But I just did this internally. These are just some of the things that I came up with for possibilities, if we were to do it in the detention center wholly and not use the Sheriff's Department or anything like that.
Have you gotten policies and procedures from, say, Santa Fe County?
There are policies and procedures. I got some from Rio Arriba County. They do have a street cleanup crew, and this was some of the stuff that they also do.
And the same criteria that eliminates all the population, is that a state law, or this recommendation, you can't have? Could you go back to the restrictions and how you came about with that? No drugs, no alcohol, no mental health issues. Who determined these restrictions?
When I talked to other detention centers, I contacted Rio Arriba, they have this in their policy. I contacted Chavez County, they have this in their policy. I talked to San Miguel County, and they have this in their policy for their programs, which they have for inmate works.
But there's no law, this isn't an NMAC recommendations. For instance, we could still have people with alcohol abuse if we chose to, we could have mentally ill patients if they were classified as mildly mentally ill. I mean, what I'm saying, I'm asking you, is there a way to work through this upon the okay with the lawyers at NMAC?
I can definitely check with the lawyers at NMAC to see if this would be something that they would be willing to allow. But just from the information gathering that I received, it's, it seems to be consistent. And I think because a lot of these other facilities are also insured by the New Mexico Association of Counties, that when they reviewed and accepted these policies, that this was probably some of the criteria. But I can check.
Commissioner Fambro, do you remember the gentleman's name we spoke with at NMAC on the jail expert?
He was their loss prevention specialist.
Romero?
What was it?
Was it Manny Romero?
No, it's the loss prevention specialist. I know who he is.
Sal Bargiola?
One that, Mark's not here, right?
It's a, it's a Scandinavian-sounding name.
Yeah, because we talked to him for better part of a half hour that, that night that we were there.
Well, if we could get that name, and maybe you could directly talk to him.
Okay, not a problem.
I'd appreciate that.
Is it the, being sentenced to our facility that's the really limiting factor?
Yes.
Is that the one that brings us down to one or two a month?
Yes.
And is that one something that can be reconsidered?
It could be reconsidered. That would be something that we'd have to talk to the judges about, because we have the alternatives to detention also, where if a detainee does not have to be incarcerated, then they're let out on conditions of release, which is not having these detainees or these people in the jail at all, altogether. But if they must be in detention centers, serving a sentence, then we wanna, that's where the judges wanna allow good time.
Yeah, that's the important one for us to find out, because that's what really brings us down to just one or two people. And so, go ahead.
There's mandatories that we can't do that, like if you're caught driving with a suspended revoke, there's a mandatory seven consecutive days. Suspended is a mandatory four consecutive days. Their DUI, there's a mandatory 30 consecutive days, so you can't shorten those. But those people could still participate, possibly if they wanted to, rather than just sitting in there or something like that. You can't shorten their sentence, but give them something to do, I guess. So, maybe you could look at that as well. And also, a question that I have from the start on this is, do each of these require the sentencing judge's approval to allow them to do this?
No. Once the-
Once they come to your place, it's your call.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing the judge actually does is allow the good time, and he'll put that in the, in the sentence. And then, it, it goes to the administrator, and the administrator will determine the good time.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't get good time unless you're sentenced, but you might be able to do some work.
So, in our J and S's, yeah, so in the judge's judgment and sentencing reports, then there's gotta be something that you guys get that would allow them to be part of this program.
Yes.
So, that's something that we'd have to amend all of our J and S's and all that. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's really not even worth considering unless we find out that we can-
Get more people.
Get more people, and who, detainees who aren't sentenced. You know, so unless we can, we can determine that we can actually use detainees who aren't sentenced, then-
Mr. Chairman, I totally disagree with you. I think we could find a way to, even if it's three guys once a week, that's, that's substantial to the roads and trash. And so, I would set a motion that we direct Jonna to bring back a policy and procedure for us to look at after she's spoken with the lawyer at NMAC and got some legal direction, and bring back by the first week in April, a policy for us to look at. Three is better than nothing, and as Commissioner Fambro has suggested, there could be more people in the, in the program.
Well, there's been three in the past six months, actually.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, we cannot have a motion on this. It's discussion only.
I thought it's under discussion consideration.
No, it's only under discussion regarding-
This says discussion, so-
Well, I would still ask you to continue working on a policy.
And speak to the person that we did.
Yes.
NMAC.
And answer the question, of course, whether they have to be sentenced, because it's not, it's, it's been three in the past six months, so that's pretty small.
You know, policies can be rearranged, and if it's not a liability to the county, these are just Rio Arribas. I would like to, could you provide copies of their policies?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to look at those. Thank you very much.
All right, so Commissioners, do we want to-
Can, are we thinking about breaking for lunch?
Well, we got, we got-
Can we do Mr. Cordova first?
Yeah, but let's finish, let's finish E here, and I guess, I guess we're pretty much finished.
Okay.
If you can come back to us in the near future and answer those questions that were raised today, then we'll continue the discussion then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, if, if we move up, the budget matters, then the only thing we have, we would have after lunch would be the public hearing, is that-
And that was advertised for 1:30, so we can't move that up, so.
Right, we can move it back a little bit. We certainly don't want to do the public hearing before we eat.
Mr. Cordova, are you ready if we went, if we, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we amend the agenda to, to bring all of 12A through D to, right now, before the public hearing?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Lieutenant Fambro.
Yes.
Lieutenant Gregor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Cordova.
I think he'll be buying lunch for doing that, too.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have four budget adjustments today. I think we can move relatively quickly. The first budget adjustment is for our senior program, more specifically, the senior companionship, and it's along the same lines as the last bar that we did, moving money out of health insurance and maintenance of vehicles, and moving it into meal reimbursement, utilities, other contractual, and other utilities. So, it's just that adjustment that we had talked about at the mid-year, and I recommend approval on this. Stand for any questions?
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
That's good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Lieutenant Gregor.
Yes.
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 Chairman, the next bar that we have is for our capital enhancement fund, the 399. We had budgeted originally $150,000 for land acquisition, which we ended up using money from the 103 to purchase the land, so we had some savings in there. We would like to put $17,000 into professional services, $15,000 into equipment and machinery, and $33,000 into vehicles. The $17,000 for professional services will be used to hire our grant writer under a contract through the end of this year to get them in here. We have a couple people in mind, and we think we can get someone relatively quickly. The equipment and machinery, there's a few things. Our mechanics, our new fleet division needs tools. The previous mechanics were all bringing in their own tools to use, and we've asked them to stop that practice. The county would purchase tools that they need, and we have a list of about $6,000 worth of tools that they'll need. We also put some money aside for facilities management to either buy a new snow plow for an additional truck, or whatever other maintenance needs they need for their snow removal, because they came across an issue this last week, obviously, with a 1995 truck that doesn't work very well, and they have other trucks, but they don't have the right plow. right plow. So we want to make sure they have the equipment they need to continue to do their job. And then the vehicle purchase is a purchase of a vehicle for the detention center. It'll be a transport vehicle. Unfortunately, we didn't put it on the agenda today for the actual approval of the purchase, so you'll see that at your next meeting. But, um, Nisanti Stevan at the detention center has gone through and got her quotes, and they have a vehicle in mind that's just under $33,000. And so she'll be here at the next meeting to present that to you for approval on that purchase, but I'd like to move the money now if you so choose to approve that at that time. And-
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we, budget adjustment for capital enhancement fund, um, for the four, three items.
Second.
Yes.
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 Chairman, Commissioners, the next budget adjustment is for our sheriff's department. Um, I believe in his presentation earlier, he mentioned his plan to purchase new radios. Um, so a majority of that money will come from a grant, I believe, through Office of Emergency Management, but the remainder is what he's requesting a bar for today. He'd like to take $19,000 and put it into the non-capital furniture fixture and equipment line item, taking it out of transportation expense in order to purchase the difference of the radios. Um, at this time, though, it may not be the entire $19,000, but he'd like to continue to move forward with this bar.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the final bar of the day is the most controversial. I'm just kidding, it's the clerk's recording fee.
No, we'll wait on this one.
Um, it's real simple, they're adding some money to their contractual Xerox lease, taking it out of maintenance contracts. They just came a little short on their lease for the year, and they want to make sure they have enough money to cover everything, and I recommend approval.
Well, they usually don't handle their budget very well over there, but I guess in this case, no, I was joking.
They actually had to ask how to do this, 'cause they don't do it very often.
'Cause they never have to do it.
They don't exceed the right items enough that they had to come and ask for help to do a bar.
That's why I made the joke, it's because they do handle their budget so beautifully.
We have an awesome clerk that's very appreci-, I mean, very, uh, he takes care of her stuff here in this building and-
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
For putting us out.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Leandro. And, um, Commissioners, shall we break for lunch and, and come back at 1:30? Oh, I'm sorry, Steven?
Mr. Chairman, we text Edward just to double check on the time, and it looks like it's scheduled for 1:00 for the public hearing, so if we could get back as quickly after 1:00, if it's possible.
Can we just do a continuation to 1:30 and, and give ourselves a little time for lunch?
The public hearing?
We, we have to open it for, at whatever time it was noticed for.
It says here it's noticed for 1:30.
1:30, you've noticed?
Yeah, I thought it was 1:30 as well.
Oh, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Okay.
Well-
Ah, might not be perfect.
So we have 40, 38 minutes to eat lunch. If we get here in 38 minutes, then we'll be able to eat one slice and then be done.
I can text the commission if you'd like, or- The newspaper's 1:00 P.M.
Newspaper's 1:00, so we gotta go by the newspaper. Yes, we do. Hey, Commissioners, let's, uh, let's break for lunch and come back at 1:00. Yep, it was in the newspaper at 1:00.
Motion. Motion to break for lunch.
Second.
Yes.
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 Good afternoon, we'll, uh, open up the public hearing that is scheduled for 1:00 P.M., at 1:00 P.M. And this is on eight, uh, separate summary subdivisions. I'm sorry, I was all set, I thought I had it.
Make a motion to come back into session.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Now we'll open up the public hearing scheduled at 1:00 P.M. And it's on eight separate, uh, this is for the vacation of eight summary subdivisions and, um, two, three, four. I'm going to read off the eight, uh, eight separate summary subdivisions so that we can consolidate them. Um, one is, uh, the vacation of Carol V. Garcia, summary subdivision, tract A. Uh, the next one is tract B, J. Angelo Garcia, summary subdivision. And there's tract C, Pamela A. Gonzalez, summary subdivision. Tract D is Jacqueline Boyd subdivision, summary subdivision. Tract E is Jason Garcia, summary subdivision. Tract F is Teddy and Tyler Gonzalez, summary subdivision. Tract G is Bianca Garcia and J. Garcia Jr. And tract H is Skylar Garcia, summary subdivision. So we will open up the public hearing and start with our acting planning director, Edward V. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Artuleta, Mr. Malone, Mr. Jaramillo, Mrs. Martinez, and, um, thank you, and members of the public, Valerie, I apologize. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come before you this afternoon and on eight separate applications for requests for vacation of summary subdivisions. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would first like to begin by indicating to you that you were previously provided, or as part of your packet. You were provided with a memorandum dated February 19th, 2015, and this memorandum was basically an introduction, uh, outlining what was basically at the time, uh, the delinquency of, of taxes regarding this particular, these properties. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would like to scratch that particular memo from the, from the record. I am very pleased to advise you that the applicants have paid their property taxes and this memo is no longer in effect. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, permission to approach, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as a result of the applicants paying their property taxes, I would now like to make reference to a memorandum dated March 2nd, 2015. In addition, you have also been provided with a copy of a staff report dated February 17th, 2015, and a staff report equivalent for each respective tract, tract A through H. You have also been provided with a copy of receipt demonstrating payment in the amount of $300, $300 for each respective application. You have been provided with a copy of a cover letter from the applicant to the county clerk dated December 1st, 2014. In addition, you have been provided with a copy of a filed statement of vacation for each respective summary subdivision where the applicant is requesting the statement of vacation for his or her respective summary subdivision. You have been provided with a copy of the applicant's waiver of section 9.3.3, releasing you, the board of county commissioners, to hear this application within the timeframes outlined in section 9.3.3. In addition, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have been provided with a letter respective only to tract A, uh, where Mr. Almer Garcia has been appointed as a personal representative for the estate of Carol V. Garcia. You have been provided with a copy of the existing deed for each tract. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have been provided with a copy of the subdivision final plat as recorded in the office of the county clerk for each respective summary subdivision. You have also been provided with a copy of the family transfer plat that was approved that created the eight original parcels to which the family members now request to vacate the eight respective summary subdivisions to return back to the original eight parcels outlined in the family transfer survey plat. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before I read for you into the record, and just for point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, did you go ahead and open the public hearing respective for each tract? Is that correct?
Well, I opened the public hearing as a consolidated matter, um, but we can open it for each tract to allow for any discussion by the public. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate to open it separately for each tract. Ultimately, your vote will have to be separately on each tract, and there may be, we don't know until we hear the evidence, but there may be factors that are different. The vast majority of the factors are going to be common, and it's appropriate to hear that evidence, uh, once with regard to all the tracks, but just in case there's any evidence that's specific to a particular tract, we should do that. We should open it with regard to each of the eight tracks.
Okay. And so now we will open, open the public hearing for tract A, which is, um, Carol V. Garcia, summary subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me for interrupting, but when, when I said for each tract, I meant all together at the same time, just to be clear that we've opened it for all of the tracks. We don't need to go one at a time at a time like that.
Well, I believe we have.
I think we have.
The public hearing for all tracks, then, so we're in good stead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, we wanted to emphasize or have you consider opening the public hearing for each respective summary subdivision. As Mr. Malone, the county attorney, has indicated, a good portion of the reviews and the information that we'll be providing for you will be consistent with each respective summary subdivision. There will be some areas where it will kind of be a little bit different, but for the most part, they're the same. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for orientation purposes, you were provided also, again, with an aerial photograph, uh, that was part of the introduction documentation. Just for orientation purposes, before I read to you the memorandum dated March 2nd of 2015, these properties, these eight summary subdivisions, totaling nearly 60 acres and comprised of approximately 31 subdivision lots, are located northwest, or just slightly northwest of the Taos County property where the proposed veteran cemetery is being proposed. Just for orientation purposes, you could actually even probably say it's adjacent to. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I come before you today to respectfully present for your consideration the request from eight property owners who desire to vacate their respective summary subdivisions in accordance with section 9.3 Vacation of Plats of Ordinance 2005-8 Taos County subdivision regulations. I would like to advise you that since I prepared the pack, the document dated February 19th, 2015, which should be included in your packet, a major change has occurred. I am pleased to advise that effectively yesterday, March 2nd, 2015, the properties collectively are no longer delinquent in their property taxes, and the outstanding amount of $34,167.93 has been paid. The breakdown is as follows, and I don't think that we need to get into the breakdown, so I'll omit the breakdown, but collectively, the amount is $34,167. The request for a vacation of a final plat effectively dissolves the lots that were created when the subdivision was approved and returns the property back to its original status prior to subdivision approval. In February of 2009, the applicants under the Rio Pueblo Infrastructure Association, which was comprised of the eight summary subdivisions, entered into a Rio Pueblo Infrastructure Association agreement with Taos County. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you want to see a copy of that agreement, I have it available if you need to see that. The agreement indicates that the association hereby agreed to apply 15% of all payments from real estate purchase contracts entered into by all the owners of the respective summary subdivisions towards the infrastructure construction improvements associated with the eight summary subdivisions, such as a type C roadway and five welds, water lines, and meters to be in place no later than June 1st of 2014. Unfortunately, as the result of the market crash in 2008, only two lots out of a total of 31 combined lots were sold. Failure by the association to meet the engineer's estimated amount of infrastructure costs by means of real estate purchase contracts was to result in the owners of the eight summary subdivisions agreeing to provide, on or about January 2nd, 2014, a letter of credit reflective of the engineer's estimate, including contingency and allowances to Taos County, with Taos County identified as a beneficiary, no later than June 1st of 2014. Infrastructure improvements never commenced. Conventional electric power, telephone service, and natural gas service are not available. Those were clearly disclosed in the applicant's disclosure statement. The owners of the eight summary subdivisions do not have the means and apparently have been unsuccessful in obtaining a letter of credit to pay for the cost of infrastructure improvements, which according to an engineer's estimate of probable cost dated January 22nd of 2013, indicates a grand total of $180,600 is necessary to complete the certain infrastructure improvements. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also have a copy of that engineer's estimate available if you would like to inspect that. Thus, the desire of the owners to vacate their respective summary subdivision, which includes tracts A through H, and return the properties to the original eight lots that were approved as a family transfer in 2007. It should be noted that if the board of county commissioners votes to approve the request for vacation of each of the eight summary subdivision, each tract, A through H, will be subject to the county subdivision and land use regulations and other applicable ordinances. In other words, all regulations shall remain in, in full force and effect. The requests to vacate their respective subdivisions being made by the eight owners are consistent with Article 9, Section 9.3 Vacation of Plats, where in approving the vacation of all or a part of a final plat, the board of county commissioners shall decide whether the vacation will adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or of persons within the subdivision being vacated. No roads have been dedicated to the county, and therefore, there's no need for the board of county commissioners to require that roads dedicated to the county in the final plat continue to be dedicated to the county. Of the 31 lots, the respective lots associated with the respective tract are all owned by the common owner. I had previously stated that two lots had been previously sold. Those lots are now back in the common ownership of the owner. In other words, the same, excuse me, in other words, tract A1, A2, and A3 are all under ownership of the same person. The same is true for the lots associated with tracts B through H. It is planning staff's determination that none of the eight requests for vacation adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or of persons within the subdivision being vacated. It is also planning staff's determination that the applicants have complied with the notice requirements for all owners of record of property within the subdivided land to be vacated, and all owners of record of property contiguous to the subdivided land to be vacated have been notified or certified mail return receipt requested. I have available for your inspection copies of the certified return receipts, copies of photographs affirming of the posting of the properties, and the legal advertisements for each respective public hearing appeared in the February 5th, 2015 issue of the Taos News, and they were published for 1:00 P.M. this afternoon. Since the review for each application is similar, and so as to not be redundant in planning staff's review, I respectfully suggest that you open the public hearing, which you have, for tracts A through H, to allow each applicant to speak on behalf of their respective application. Accord those wishing to speak for or against the request the opportunity to do so. Close the public hearings, and under separate motions, vote to either approve or deny the request for vacation made by each respective owner. It is planning staff's recommendation that at minimum, the board of commissioners find the following. Number one, the board of county commissioners finds or determines that vacating the Carol V. Garcia, the J. Angelo Garcia, the Pamela A. Gonzalez, the Jacqueline A., the Jacqueline Boyd, the Jason A. Garcia, the Teddy and Tyler Gonzalez, the Bianca and J. Junior Garcia, and the Skylar Garcia summary subdivisions will not adversely affect the interests of persons on contiguous land or persons within the subdivision being vacated. Number two, the board further finds that vacation of the plat, in particular, the Carol V. Garcia and the others, and we've identified the names for the record, has no adverse impact on utilities or roads within the subdivision, which utilities such as electricity, telephone, natural gas do not exist, and the reference roadways, which are Camino Rio Pueblo, Camino Vista Aurora, Camino de las Estrellas, and Camino Claro, have not been built, nor were the roads previously accepted by the county for maintenance. Number three, the board further finds that the vacation of the plat or plats does not relax any applicable regulation or ordinance, and specifically, the subdivision regulations and land use regulations remain in full force and effect. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, planning staff recommends that each respective request for vacation be approved and conditioned on the following. Number one, planning staff with the assistance of the legal department shall create the approved statement of vacation, which would be the decision, for each respective tract A through H, declaring the vac- Declaring the vacation of all of the final plat in the approved statement shall be recorded in the office of the county clerk. Number two, the planning staff shall work with the county clerk in marking each respective final plat with the words "vacated" and refer on the final plat to the volume and page on which the statement of vacation is recorded. These are in accordance with the Taos County Subdivision Regulations and also with state statute. Number three, each applicant shall work with the planning department in creating deeds supporting the approved vacation. Such deeds shall be filed and recorded in the office of the county clerk. In other words, one legal description for each property. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that concludes planning staff's presentation.
Thank you. Edward, Commissioners, do you have any questions? If there be none, then I'll open the public hearing for first the applicant on tract A.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm under oath and penalty of law for prior?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Elmer N. Garcia. Good afternoon again. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, Ambro, Gallegos, and Ms. O'Neil, and staff, Mr. Steve Archuleta and Mr. Malone. We want to thank you first for giving us this opportunity to present our request before you. We also want to thank Ed for all his help, because going through the process was pretty interesting and difficult and tedious. I believe for the record, I just stated my name, but what I wanted to do was introduce the family that's here. Introduce first my daughter Pamela, Pamela here, and her husband, my son-in-law Ted Gonzalez, and then Jacqueline Boyd on this end. This is Skylar Garcia, and then two sons, Jay in the front, Jason in back. What, there are, there are two grandchildren that couldn't be here, and I'll let their dad explain it. They did sign a power of attorney affidavit and all that, and why they weren't able to be here. What I'd like to ask of the Commission, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, on behalf of our group, I'd like to, to present an outline of how this whole thing came to be, and it won't take more than a few minutes if I could go ahead and do that.
Proceed.
Thank you. In 2006, I felt like I should give some land to my daughters and grandchildren, and I went ahead and prepared the deeds, and I did transfer these parcels to these people that you see here before you. And I thought, well, first of all, it could be good if they could develop these properties, build, do some summary subdivisions. Perhaps it could be good experience for them, and it would also add to their supplemental retirement at one day, someday. Soon after that, they did go ahead. They hired collectively, they hired Lou Medrano, civil attorney and surveyor from Santa Fe. Lou was former Secretary of Highways under Governor King, so he had all the experience that they needed. Lou also helped me with develop some of the other properties out there over the last 20 years. So, so the, they then started with their summary subdivision applications in 2006, and, and by, it took them about two years to finalize and get the final plats for those eight subdivisions. They're all divided into different sized pieces. There, this is all Rio Pueblo front. Across the river is the Taos Pueblo, and the elevations are real high in that area on the, on the, on the, on the river. So you've got a lot of cliff area that includes, is included with some of these subdivisions. Tract A is on the river, B is on the river, C, D, and E. All those are on the riverfront. The rest are behind it, and that fronts the other subdivision that was completed several years, years ago of 24 3-acre lots with all infrastructure in place. I did that also, and all those lots were sold, shucks, they've been sold for the last, I'd say, and, no, not quite, six, seven, eight years. And on there are, there's only three homes right now in there. That's that big home that I built for myself, and then the, the other two, two homes that are, of course, occupied. So, so, so what occurred then was that we did reach that agreement with the county to delay infrastructure until June 1st of 2014. We felt that that would give them, I guess it was like, how many years, four or five years, to try and sell on real estate contracts, no down payment, small payments of $360, and they were able to sell two lots, and those two lots were sold on tract F and G. When this occurred, by the way, those two lot owners were contacted, and, and they were, they agreed to, to, to trade their parcels out of this, these two summary subdivisions and locate elsewhere, which was right there on the highway on, on C-110. And they agreed, agreed to do that. It's been like six, eight months ago, and that was done. And they transferred all their interest back into the, the summary subdivisions, and so that was taken care of in case, because I didn't know if, if that was understood when Edward made that presentation on those two sales that were made. So, so that was done. Somewhere around January of 2013, it was pretty obvious that, well, you, you know what happened there with, with the banks and the economy in 2007 and 2008? I mean, everything went just completely berserk. So, we had commitments, they had, and I had commitments from First State Bank for, for the infrastructure commitment to get, to get done. When the 2007 economy just went under, they canceled all commitments. Since then, I don't know of a single bank in New Mexico that is offering any money for infrastructure building anywhere. And we tried, they tried several banks here, Santa Fe and Albuquerque, and, and they just weren't able to get it done. In 2013, it's pretty obvious that the infrastructure, infrastructure development loans wouldn't be there. So, I, I met with them, we all met together, and we, by the way, all, all members of the, of the parcels met at least every two to three months at meetings to discuss the status, what was going on, what Mr. Medrano, the civil engineer, had done, what, where the status of everything was. And so we met in 2013, and by that time, we, we just knew, and I, you know, that there was just no possibility of getting that commitment with the county done by June of 2014. So we started talking to, matter of fact, they all hired an attorney locally, Mr. DiStefano, to meet with county staff, county attorney, Mr. Malone. Oh, before that, it was with Barbara Martinez, and to talk about this whole issue. And then after that, with Mr. Steve and Mr. Malone. And it became pretty evident that the only legal option, alternative, was to turn to vacating the properties and putting it back in its original piece that it was, which was a total of 54 or 55 acres as, as a subdivided. So all, all owners are, are here, present, except the two that are here by, by, by power of attorney, and they've all agreed to request before you the, the reverting back to its original size and status. I think that pretty much covers it as to why and how it happened, and what they planned. Of course, all taxes are paid. I think I totaled up what they told, what they paid the other day when, when they all collectively put up the $34,000 to pay all taxes for, I think it was 213, 14? Yeah. And then prior to that, they had paid 20-some thousand dollars for 210 and 11, I believe. So all taxes were paid, and what I wanted to ask at this point, if there was any specific question that I could answer, because I, I pretty much went through everything on their behalf to see if there might be some questions that the Commission might have, attorney, and manager of any of the subdivisions, but they're all here, present to request that their specific summary be, be reverted back to its original size and status. I think that's pretty much it. Covers what happened.
Ms. Garcia, what happens with the open space easement, the 18.6?
Oh, I forgot about that, yes. What happened was in their dealing with, Mr. Medrano dealing with the county on, on bringing the size of the tracks down to 1.3 acres, that open space had to be included, awarded to the county in lieu of the regulation, which was whatever size it was. And, and so, so we were able to, then I helped them with some of the property, give the county 18 or 19 acres of open space all along the river, which was great, I thought, you know, for, for, for the open space use. So that's what the status of the open space. Now, what happens to it? Well, I guess it stays with the county, I suppose. I don't see what, what else could be done. We have no object to that, because it's for the use of open space, which is good, I think.
Well, if you could just hold on for a moment, because we will open it for public comment individually. But, so I'm still curious about the open space easement and, and what the status of that land will be going forward. Maybe Edward or Bob can, that question?
Mr. Chairman, I have not studied that question. I understand it to be an easement, not a grant, and not to the county, but to the future potential buyers of those, those lots. That's not something that I've studied and prepared to answer, but I've reviewed these papers, and that's my understanding of what the easement was, not a grant to the county, but a grant to the users of the lots.
Whatever the case might be, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and that is whatever the county feels legally as should be done, that's what we do on the open space issue.
Edward, did you want to chime in on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I would concur with Mr. Malone. Let me just for the record state that it's my understanding of, of the open space easement, that the open space easement was basically retained ownership or common ownership through the existing property owners, and there was never officially transferred via deed to the county. The open space easement, as I understood it, allowed the applicants to create lots that were less than two acres in size, but by dissolving the subdivisions, that easement is not a requirement of the family transfer. That open space easement is not a requirement of the family transfer. Whenever we apply or approve family transfers, the applicant is not required to provide an open space easement. The open space easement was just simply a result of the summary subdivisions.
Do you have any suggestions then as to how we deal with the ownership and use of this 18.6 acres in the event that we do vote to vacate each of those summary subdivisions?
I would respectfully recommend that it retain or remain as an open space easement. It's still going to be under the control and ownership of the respective property owner, but I really, I would see a benefit for that open easement to remain in place. Again, there's nothing to prohibit the individuals from exercising a family transfer, a lot split, or a subsequent subdivision in the future. All we're doing is dissolving the subdivision at this particular time. Once again, the enforcement or the placement of the existing subdivision regulations and land use regulations are not relaxed. They still remain in full effect. So if any one of these property owners wishes to split their respective property at a future date, then I would believe that that easement would be beneficial. However, there's no requirement for it to be in place.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us what the plans are for the eight lots as drawn out?
Yes, sir. They've discussed this at length, and the plans are to, probably, the only option that they see right now is to sell it as a, as a unit, and they've agreed to that, combine it and sell the 50 acres as is. That's the thought right now.
And so I guess it's possible for us to...
Pay taxes on, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
And pay taxes on...
For a long time.
Then I guess it's a, a potential option for this Commission today to not only vacate the eight summary review subdivisions, but to merge the eight individual lots into one, one large lot of 55 acres, and to maintain the 18.6 as a perpetual open space easement? Is that a possibility?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think so, because the public notice doesn't talk about merging those lots. It only talks about vacating the existing summary subdivisions.
Mm-hmm. But if it were this board's decision to go that route, we could continue it and republish it, if that was, if that was the, both a decision of the board and the agreement of the owners.
It would have to be republished and, and voted on in that regard at a later date.
All right, Commissioners. Any questions for the applicant? If there be none, then we'll open the public hearing, public comment on tract A. Or if you have a public comment that applies to any or all, then that'll work too. Please, please step forward, and you'll have to state your name and swear in with county clerk.
I am under oath and penalty of law. The testimony you're about to give is true and factual.
Yes.
Please state your name.
Diane Sights. I am one, and my neighbor here is one of the other owners in the 24-lot subdivision that is contiguous with the property from behind to the canyon. When we purchased those lots, we were told that 18 acres open space was for our use, and there were plans, there was supposed to be an equestrian center, blah, blah, blah. That obviously never happened. So, number one, how does that affect us? Number two, with the vacation of the plat behind our 24 subdivisions, there are dirt roads that go down there. Now, does that mean we can block access off so we don't have people coming through our 24-lot subdivision, tearing up our road, bringing in dogs, doing whatever to access the back 50-some acres? We know just from being part of that 24-lot subdivision, what we have gone through, things that were promised and told to us, to find out that documentation was never recorded, and really put us all in a really bad situation that we have been dealing with over the past three years. So we need to know what's going on behind us now and how it's going to impact us.
My question would be addressed to Edward, I guess, initially, and that would be, are there any disclosures and covenants within the 24-lot subdivision? are there any disclosures and covenants within the 24-lot subdivision that pertain to the 18.6 acres of open space easement?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the subdivision that's being referred to as the El Liano subdivision, I do not have that file readily available. I did not review that file in terms of the disclosure statement, so I have no answer for you at this time.
I'm concerned about the 18 points, the final disposition here of the 18.6 acres of open space, and don't know, from your comment, Bob, whether or not we can even address that issue today of the 18.6 open space acres. It's a critical issue to both the eight summary review subdivisions, and may well be relevant also to the 24-acre subdivision that was previously approved.
Mr. Chairman, you're looking at me for comment, and so, I think that I would, first of all, confirm your concern that action on the easement is outside of what was noticed. And we would have to know a lot more about the easement to be able to make a wise, you commissioners, would have to know a lot more about the easement to be able to make a wise decision about what is even possible. For example, who owns the property that the easement is on? Are they willing to come to some agreement in that regard? That sort of thing. Very quick comment that would be helpful in putting together some information for the member of the public who was speaking about the 24-lot subdivision is two related things. One, if she knows, and Edward may be able to at a later date, it sounds like we may be going that direction, but at a later date, Edward may be able to provide that information, whether there are any easements across the 24-lot subdivision to either the recreational easement or to these eight summary subdivisions that are seeking to be vacated. There may or may not be. And to answer her question, it would be impossible to answer that question without knowing whether there are easements across the 24-lot subdivision. The other related question is whether her lot is, her individual lot is contiguous to the eight proposed for vacation.
Mine is not, but hers is, and...
So, my concern, I'll just repeat it one more time, I don't see how we can make a decision about the disposition of the summary subdivisions without making a decision about the 18.6 acres, and since that was not part of the public notice, I, in my opinion, we should continue the hearing and re-notice it to include the open space easement as part of our deliberations. And the easement from the other? Please approach and state your name and...
I'm Glenda Carlisle.
Is that it?
I am a firm under oath and penalty of law for perjury, but the testimony you're about to give is true and factual.
Glenda Carlisle. Mr. Commissioner, my, one of my big concerns is, we assume we have a private road out there. We maintain it ourselves among the three people that live there. We have got to be sure that people are not going back and forth down this road, which is not the greatest in the world to begin with, that we're maintaining. They've got to have a separate way to get into that property outside of coming through ours. That's a real issue for me.
There is that dirt road that goes along the rim, right? That goes through the eight separate lots?
All over the place.
But as I recall, there's one in particular that goes right along the rim, and there's certain turnouts there, and...
Does it come, do you have to get to it from our property?
Right. Because of the arroyos, sometimes you have to go all the way around.
Essentially, originally, I would say, two access points off of 110, one which comes into our Rancho Chamizo 24 subdivision, and there is a horrible, right now, dirt road with rust.
Because it's not maintained.
That come off of our private road to access eight lots behind us. There was another entrance further down 110 that also accessed the property with the rim lots. So, our concern is having people use our private road that we're paying to maintain and ripping it up, and where does that leave us?
I understand. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Malone?
Two very quick comments. I should have elaborated slightly when you were speaking earlier about the access across the 24-lot subdivision, that if there are private easements, that's not a matter for the county's jurisdiction. I mean, we need to be careful about what we say we can and can't do. And the second thing is to remind the commission that in these matters of quasi-judicial hearings, you do have the alternative of going into executive session.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not suggesting that you need to, but I want to be sure that the commission is aware of that.
Yes, Mr. Garcia, let me just follow up with Mr. Malone for a moment. If the 24-lot subdivision that had been previously approved included some provisions about the 18.6 open space, then those easements within that subdivision could be relevant to a future public hearing on this matter?
It could be relevant to what you choose to do about the open space easement, but this commission doesn't have the power to do away with private easement agreements. That's the only point that I was trying to make. And to be clear, it's not just easements to the open space area. There may well be easements across the 24-lot subdivision that allow access to these parcels that we're talking about.
The eight parcels?
That would exist whether you vacate the parcels or not. It would exist as they are with many smaller lots. It would exist after you vacate, if you do that. Those easements are a matter of private agreement.
Mr. Garcia?
Chairman, Commissioner, in response to the testimony by the two ladies, Diane and her husband and I were, and I hope still are, good friends. We had a little problem with the water well system out there, but that was resolved. As far as the access through the El Liano subdivision, which is the 24-lot where they live, there are agreements already in place for access through the existing road that I built, through the El Liano subdivision, to go back to any of the other properties that I own in the back. One of them is the summary subdivisions we're talking about, and I have all the documents recorded and so on. There is also an El Liano road maintenance agreement that needs to be reviewed also, because that is in place, and that also talks about access through the 24-acre lot subdivision to the Rio Pueblo overlook subdivision, which are the summary lots. And I have all that recorded and so on, which is, I'll give to Edward later on.
And the overlook subdivision doesn't include this 18 acres of open space? Or it does?
No, it does not.
That's further north, or?
It's further to, yeah, northeast, northeast. It's that pink area. You're talking about the open space?
No, I was talking about the, I thought you had mentioned an overlook subdivision.
Well, that's the one we're talking about with the summary subdivisions. That's what it's called. Right.
Well, commissioners, Edward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a clear answer, and I'm not about to attempt to provide you a clear answer on the easements through the El Liano subdivision or anything along those lines, but I do want to state for the record that I do have one copy of one of the summary subdivisions that was approved or considered back in 2008, and this particular one is referenced for the Pamela A. Gonzales summary subdivision, which would be tract C. Included in this packet within section number seven, there's, and more specifically, which section number seven is the summary of subdivision covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and more so, the following is made in part of Article VII as Section 7.6. It states, "Open space easement. The 18.6 acre open space easement, see plat filed May 24, 2007, in Cabinet Page 127A, means the use of this open space is granted to all residents and their visitors within the Rancho Chamizo development, and for the future developments to the east on lands owned by Elkar Chamizo Lindo LLC. It is understood that the 18.6 open space easement shall remain under the management and jurisdiction of the Elkar Limited Partnership Company. The Elkar Limited Partnership hereby retains the right to amend this paragraph to identify itself from any liability by any person or entity." So, I just want to share that, or put that into the record, that there is a reference within one of the subdivisions applications. I suspect that this was part of every respective subdivision application that was submitted. Does it provide clear direction? Unclear, but I just want to share that with you.
Thank you for complicating the matter further.
I think you need, this is a public hearing, and so, we have these rules about being under oath, and I... There was actually only one document that was filed in a timely fashion. There were documents filed later, after Elmer Garcia had no vested interest in the 24-lot subdivision. Things were never filed in a timely fashion, which we all found out when we went through legal problems concerning that subdivision. So, please, when you review those documents, look at when they were recorded, and are they actually legal? Because most of them are not.
Yes, sir. Please approach and state your name and take the oath.
Yes.
Please state your name.
My name is Richard Cordova. I'm one of the property owners, one of the three there, and I am concerned about the roads that are back behind us, because we're, that subdivision is directly behind us. So, that's my concern, is what happens with those roads back behind us?
Thank you. Well, it sounds to me like the 18.6 acres that I've been concerned about, that there's interests in that open space easement that accrue to all of the owners of the eight lots before us today, and owners of other lots of other subdivisions. And I'm not smart enough to be able to figure any of this stuff out with this complication thrown into it. So, I'm going to suggest to the commission, somebody make a motion, either to go into executive session or to ask for a continuation of this hearing at a later date, that would include in the publication the 18.6 acre open space easement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that we go into executive session.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Don't know how long it'll be. You guys want to go upstairs, since we have so many people here? And so, we will go upstairs into executive session, try to figure this out, and come back down, probably within a half hour. Ask for a motion to come back into open session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, and now, I'll ask our attorney, Robert Malone, to give us a, give the public a summary of what happened in executive session.
The commission met in executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 1015-1H3, an exception that allows the commission to go into executive session for quasi-judicial matters for administrative adjudicatory deliberations. The only matters discussed were the eight applications for vacation of the summary subdivisions. No decisions were made.
And do we have a motion to accept the attorney's summary?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Commissioners, after executive session, let's see, I guess, before I ask for a motion, I guess I'll just say one thing to the people who live within the subdivision. You know, the private easements, our private easements, and the county really has no standing or say or enforceability in any of that, but it is a fact that the owners of the eight lots in question are, do have an easement, we believe they do have an easement, and they do have an obligation to help to maintain that road. And so, I mean, at least that's what we understand from our records. So, I just wanted you to know that, and then, you know, it's a matter of, it's a private matter between the landowners as to how that all is accommodated, but...
One question.
I'm sorry to...
For the record, now.
Ask you to come up again and...
If the plat is being vacated and being turned back to original state...
Mm-hmm.
So, there weren't roads back there to begin with, does that mean those dirt roads all over then get vacated as well, because that's part of that plat?
I don't think that those dirt roads are included in the, well, I'm not sure exactly which dirt roads you're referring to, so... The various, the various unimproved access roads. I don't think that any of those roads are included in any portion of the decision. Yes, they're drawn by surveyors to show that they're in existence, but their maintenance or their improvements are not part of any decision that we'd be making here today. All right, well, that being said, commissioners, do we have a motion to proceed on the agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, could I just make sure, I want to make sure you have your voice, so could you come back up? And I'm wondering, I guess I'm wondering why you're here?
We are part of the 24 subdivision that is contingent to all this behind us, and things that we were told when we purchased in that 24-lot subdivision that we have subsequently found out not to be true, because documentation was not recorded in a timely fashion, and therefore, we have been told by several different attorneys that those documents are not legal.
So, I'm wondering, what is it you want? That's what I'm not clear on.
We don't want people coming through our private road to access an area back there, which leads to the point of, if the plat is vacated, and yes, it was all drawn out, the individual lots, the roads that connect, all of that. So, if the whole plat is being vacated, doesn't that also mean that those roads are vacated? So, we don't have people coming through our subdivision to access an area back there that has now been vacated.
So, I, what I hear you saying is, you don't want these people to have any access at all to their property?
There is another access point from further up the road, where there was another adobe entrance for, or of their acreage. The road is not improved. We have a good road, and what we don't want is people coming through there, and we're the ones paying to maintain the road, because it is not dedicated to the county.
Okay, well, I understand that, and unfortunately, with the prescriptive easements, once a road is being used... And unfortunately, with the prescriptive easements, once a road is being used, it becomes a public road, and I've had the same problem in where I live, and I've had to just give up because the road has been used for a number of years. But what I hear you saying is you don't want them to use the road, and you want them to maintain a new road, excuse me, and you want them to start a new road. So I'm wondering, can you work it out with them? Can you work-
The road that comes off of our road, right now, I wouldn't even consider it a drivable road.
Your road?
Off of our road to access that back piece. It was never improved. There are now ruts like this. People are driving into the sage to kids partying down along the rim, throwing the beer bottles. That's what we want to prevent. And if the whole plat is vacated, does that not mean that those theoretical access roads would be vacated as well, since that is part of the proposed plat?
I, I believe our planning director could answer that for you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. And once again, I'll refer to my staff report, in particular, page three. By no means am I trying to come across as a, as a legal counsel or legal attorney. I'm not qualified to do so. The request for the vacation is merely that, to remove the lots. The easements that may exist or may not exist will remain in place. The fact that the roads were never developed or constructed further supports the request on the applicant's behalf to vacate the summary subdivisions. They were on the hook to build these roadways, which represented in their application that they were, in this agreement that they entered into the county, they were required to construct type C roadways from the end of this looped road that's being referenced, which I believe is known as El Almo or Arroyo del Almo Road or Arroyo del Almo Loop. From that point, they were required to provide type C roadways leading up to the entrance into these summary subdivisions and through the summary subdivisions. These roadways, we agree, have never been constructed, but the easement, we believe, still exists. So therefore, the easement is not being vacated, it's merely the fact that the subdivision of lots are being vacated.
Edward, is the easement to these eight lots, where, where is the easement to these eight lots located?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe that it is through the, the El Liano subdivision. It would be very appropriate to have the applicant address that question.
Ms. Garcia.
Chairman, Commissioners, to kind of give a little more informa, data on the access, these roads, the, the, we did construct one of the best type C roads, completely certified by everybody, county, staff, attorneys, the people that do all the, the, the 18 inches of pit run and then eight inches or 12 inches of gravel. Yes, but it's been 10 years now, and those roads have to be maintained. And they were only maintained, maintained while I had that money in the homeowner association, which is now a big question mark. I then gave the money when I talked to Ms. Seitz, if she would agree to continue the maintenance of the roads, because these roads are private easements to these subdivisions plus other, plus other lands that we own. And, and yes, now it hadn't been graded, nothing for the past, probably, well, since Ms. Seitz and the other lady moved in here, I don't know, three, four years ago. Before then, I was, we were taking care of all of that. But, but these are private easements and have nothing to do with, with the issue at hand.
Well, the, the roads that were dedicated under the subdivision, there, there must have been a road maintenance agreement that was part of that subdivision.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And isn't it prorated to ownership of the subdivision?
Yes.
And don't you own most of the lots?
No, they're all sold.
Oh, so all of them are sold, and so the enforcement of the road maintenance agreement is up to all 24 owners?
That's correct.
Okay. And is one of those roads the access to the property in question today?
Entire road is. It's a circle.
Yes.
Off of 110.
And, and, and so the legal access to these eight lots is what road?
That road, through El Liano subdivision.
Through El Liano subdivision. But these lots are also supposed to be part of the road maintenance agreement?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, absolutely.
And so-
Any road that, any access to the eight, former eight or present eight, they have to participate in the maintenance agreement. It's in the document.
It's in, it's in-
Recorded and all.
Yeah, in the document that approved the 24 lot subdivision.
Yes. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
And so apparently there's some problem with the, the way that's been managed.
Amen. That's right.
It has, it has to be some owners who are actually collecting and then hiring out to graders and whatnot.
Ms. Seitz did, when I appointed her chairman, did pave the highway one time, but I had turned over the account to her, which had $30 some hundred in it, to do that. What happened to the rest of the money? I have no idea. She paid $400 or $500 for that first cleanup.
And, and then the owners of the eight lots have never been notified to pay dues or any, any such thing like that?
No, well, there's been no, no reason to. I mean, there was, the two people that we had previously sold real estate contracts to never planned to build until, they, they bought it for their grandkids, is what they did.
Okay. Well, then, Commissioners, before I ask for a motion and a decision from the board, I guess it'd be appropriate for me to close the public hearing? Is that the, the procedure?
That, that would be correct, and, Mr. Chairman, to remind you what we talked about earlier, if there's going to be a motion, we're going to have to do it separately for each of these applications because there's separate numbered applications. I realize that's awkward and it's going to take some time, but-
All righty. Well, with that advice, I will close the public hearing and ask the Commissioners to come up with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I apologize for being naive and maybe not paying attention, I don't know that you asked if there was anybody else who wanted to speak for or against the application. I don't know if any of the applicants wanted to come up and speak or anything along those lines. We did hear testimony from individuals who obviously have concerns, but I don't know if, if you delegated any time for the applicants to come and speak on behalf of their respective applications?
Actually, I did not. What I did was I opened it for track A. So I guess I will go through each of the seven, other seven, and ask if there are either any applicants or members of the public to, to comment on this application. So we have concluded the public hearing for track A. Would the applicant like to speak regarding track B? If not, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak regarding track B? If not, I'll close the public hearing on track B. Would the applicant on track C like to say anything? Is there any member of the public that would like to say anything on track C? If not, I will close the hearing on track C. Track D, would the applicant like to speak? If not, then I will ask the public if anybody would like to speak, and if not, I will close the public hearing. Track E, would the applicant like to speak? If not, anyone from the public? I'll close the hearing on track D. Track F, would the applicant like to speak? Anybody from the public? Hearing is closed on track F. Track G, applicant like to speak? Anyone from the public? Hearing is closed on track G. Track H, would the applicant like to speak? Anyone from the public? Hearing is closed on track H. Commissioners, do we have a motion to, or any motion regarding this hearing today?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On my agenda, there's a, oh, excuse me, I misspoke. No, I misspoke. Sorry.
A lot of letters.
Mr. Chair, I guess then, we're gonna go ahead and make a motion for track A, and then we'll do motions all the way down for each track. Is that how we were?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I make a motion for subdivision track A, Carol V. Garcia, under the conditions of our staff of Mr. V. Hill, and adding a condition that we would have the subdivision owner consider a possible merger down the road. So with that, I stand on my motion.
Clarification purposes, Commissioner Gallegos, would the motion then be to vacate the subdivision, the track A summary review subdivision with the findings and conclusions stated by our planning director, Edward V. Hill, plus one additional condition, which would be the merger of all eight lots into a single lot?
Correct, correct. Thank you, sir. That's what, that's what I meant to say, but I got a lot of information there, so-
Pretty close.
I tried to get it as close as I could.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, Commissioners? Please call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion on track B?
I, I make, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Now, you can just make it the same motion?
Okay, so it'll be the same motion for track B as-
merger as well?
With, with the merger as well. So all, all conditions, findings, as Mr. V. Hill has stated, in track B as well with the additional condition of merger.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes. Commissioner Gago? Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion for track C?
Mr. Chair, I make the same motion for track C as I stated for track A and B as well.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes. Commissioner Gago? Yes.
Yes. Track D?
Mr. Chair, I make the same motion with all the same additions that I asked on A, B, and C.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Track E?
Mr. Chair, I make the same motion for the conditions as findings as well as Mr. V. Hill has found for track A, B, C, and D.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Track F?
Chair, I'd make a motion as well for track F with the same conditions that I've stated in the past for, for track A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes. Yes.
Track G?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion with all the same conditions, findings that we've had through track A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner Gago? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Track H?
Mr. Chair, as I stated earlier, I'd make a motion for the same conditions and findings, and as Mr. V. Hill has stated, that we go through track A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Well, with that, this agenda item is concluded. Mr. Garcia, you can get with staff, Tallas County Planning, and arrange for meeting the conditions that have been set forth for the vacation of the eight summary review subdivisions.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes.